Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of March 12th, 2020. As we start all meetings, I would like to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded and is also being broadcast live. So please keep that in mind. If anyone is going to get up and speak this evening, come up to the podium, give your name and address and wait to be recognized and having some...
Steve Boyce.
Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Kennedy.
Okay. Mr. Boyce is going to be remotely participating this evening. I need to call a vote to approve that. Roll call.
Yes.
(inaudible)
Steve, I'd love to just mess with you on this one.
Mike?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
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 Okay. We're ready to rock. Can you hear me, Steve?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Also, would you please join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. An entertaining motion to approve the minutes of Machville.
So moved.
All those in favor, we're gonna, everything we have to do tonight because we have a participating member has to be roll call.
Yes.
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 Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Was that a yes?
Yes.
Thank you.
He said yes.
Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Been a pretty exciting week this week so far, both with the spread of the coronavirus worldwide, domestically and within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. But before I get into that piece, I also want to commend the fans and spectators and students that participated in the state semi, or the Eastern Mass championship game yesterday at the Boston Garden. Our basketball team won last night and the MIA has decided to cancel the state championship final game, so they are the co-champs of Division Two in the state of Massachusetts. The one thing in particular I'd like to shout out to and let the committee know, the behavior of the student body and the fans was exceptional. For the third time at the Garden, a member of the security staff came up to me and said, "You should be very proud of your students. They were the best group out of the two days out of any game here." We had one student who was being spoken to but was given a second chance to stay in the Garden because of the behavior of our fans, students and adults as well. So I just wanted to let the committee know that our kids represented, our fans represented our towns really, really well, and I couldn't speak highly of the program and of our communities in the city of Boston last night. That being said, we are in a coronavirus situation. I have an 8:30 conference call with the other superintendents in the Commonwealth with the Commissioner of Education, Jeff Riley. He was supposed to have a conference call today at 3:00. He postponed. I sent that information out in the third or fourth letter that I've sent out to the community regarding the coronavirus and what we're doing. I want to tell the committee and I want to tell everybody in the community, if you feel the need, if school is in session and you would like to keep your child home, you may. Absolutely. The governor said it, the commissioner of education has said it, we as a leadership team have said that, if you feel like you should keep your child home, you may do so. We are working right now to make sure that if we have a shutdown at any point, or if a student has either voluntarily or involuntarily been quarantined, we are looking at ways, and George will talk about our online learning or our learning experience outside the classroom in the event of that. At this point, we are still in session as of tomorrow. That might change. I ask for patience from the committee and from the community as this is an evolving situation. We can't compare ourselves to other communities. We have not had any cases of presumptive or real coronavirus in this community. I'm working hand in hand with both departments, the boards of health, they've been awesome. We were on a conference call with the town administrators and the boards of health, and the boards of health have commended us on doing what we need to do at this point, is following mass DPH guidelines for safety, security and cleanliness. As of today, I have canceled all of our outgoing events, field trips through next Friday. I want to take that as a week as they come. Actually, we're looking at a two-week period yesterday, or today, tomorrow and next week. And then by midweek of next week, we'll go for the next two weeks. Some school districts have canceled indefinitely. The town of Malden, City of Malden is canceled indefinitely. The City of Everett has canceled for 30 days. Other schools in our area right now, the town of Hanover has closed for tomorrow for cleaning. We have two buildings being cleaned this weekend, and I want to let the committee know that that comes with a cost that we haven't budgeted for. So average cost is about $8,000 for a cleaning on the weekend. We did investigate, and that's for two buildings. We did investigate with a company, and they are going to charge us, actually, it's a dollar thirty a square foot to clean, a deep clean of a building. To give you an estimate, Whitman Middle School will cost us approximately $14,000. We also contacted First Student, the bus company, to make sure that they are cleaning their buses as thoroughly after each run as they possibly can. We are paying more for that. They haven't given me a quote on what that's gonna cost. They have a plan in place and they're having trouble staffing it, but rest assured, they told me as of today, they're working at every run that the seats are being wiped down and the buses are being cleaned. Both town boards of health have given, or have told me and asked permission to board those buses occasionally or on a surprise check to make sure that those buses are being cleaned. So where we at right now? I've put as much information from the DPH, from the state, nationally, from the National Association of School Psychologists on how to talk to your student, how to talk to your child, how to work through with stress of an epidemic or a disease such as the coronavirus. It's all on our website, it's all on our Facebook site. I'm awaiting the conference call with the commissioner to see where we go, what he decides as a state. We've talked informally. We think that MCAS might be on the table. Nothing is out, there's no agenda for this. There might be a closure, I'm not really sure. But I'm just asking the committee and the communities to be patient. I've been receiving both positive emails and some negative emails. I'm asking that the negative emails aren't so personal, because we are working hard as a district to make sure that your students are safe. So overall, if you feel you need to keep your student home for any reason, and I call this as a blizzard, if we had a snowstorm and you disagreed with our decision to stay open, you don't have to send your student to school. The commissioner has waived attendance, so we shouldn't be concerned with unexcused or excused absences right now. I know that's a big thing for folks. We will work with you on excused or unexcused absences. We are looking at the 185 limit. The commissioner has waived that. However, I want to make a point that we still have four snow days. We have to go and expend our 185 days. We've used one. If we go over that, I'm hoping that we hear from the commissioner tomorrow if that's something. I want the committee to keep in mind, 33% of our students are free and reduced lunch. They get food here. Some of our students get breakfast, lunch and dinner. If we do shut, we have to come up with a contingency plan to make sure our students are fed. We also have students that are on individualized education plans, IEPs, that require service delivery. We need to ensure that that, that their services are being met per the law. That I'm hoping to get from the commissioner. So all of these things, when folks come out on social media and if they're out there and saying, "You should just close, Hanover closed for tomorrow," or "Everett's closed for 30 days," we are putting a plan in place so that all of our kids, from soup to nuts, are taken care of in the best possible way, academically, socially and actually nutritionally, which is a piece that people tend to forget. So we're working on that, and after tomorrow, I'll have some more information for both staff and for parents. Want to commend WHEA. Kevin and his team have been great. We've been speaking and they're willing to work with us with whatever comes out. But this is such a fluid, evolving situation that we've never been through. In any of our superintendent's training classes, nobody said, "How do you deal with an epidemic or a pandemic when you have to close a school whenever?" But I caution, when we clean and we add to, we're adding to monies that we don't necessarily have. I've given Ernie my gold card and said, "Here, let's keep our kids safe at this point and we'll worry about the bill later on." And that's what we tend to do, we make sure that our kids are safe. But that bill might come in July or June, and we've always talked about E and D at some point. That's where we might be hitting E and D, if we end up going over. If we stay open and I have to deep clean every building twice a month at $14,000 a building, that $609,000 plus dollars is gonna go relatively quickly. So that's where we are. We are doing everything per Board of Health and Mass DPH at this point. I know some folks are uncomfortable with that, but that's where we are. And again, I will repeat myself, if people are uncomfortable, please keep your child home, contact the school, we'll work with you on an educational plan, the best we can do, given the resources that we have. We also have stuff like this plastered all over our website, wash your hands. The other pieces, I've asked Ernie to, since all the colleges are closed now, all the college kids are gonna be home looking for maybe some work to do. We have a team that we hire over the summer to move desks and do things. I've asked Ernie to bring them all back if they're around and put one or two in every building, and all their responsibility is to wipe down high-impact areas, doorknobs, everything, and just have them wiped down throughout the course of the day. Ernie's been stellar as well. He's been stockpiling supplies for months, so we have supplies at this point. He also is, these are the things above and beyond, Karen Villanueva yesterday went to Costco, BJ somewhere, and bought up as much Lysol and Lysol wipes as she could for the bus companies, because they were ill-prepared for this. Ernie has done that himself as well, just going on his own and purchasing things to make sure that we are ready. So our team and our people are really good people that we need in place in times like this, and sometimes when we talk budget, some of those positions get up there, these are the people that go above and beyond to make sure that our district keeps running and do the things behind the scenes to make sure that we have the supplies that we need to make sure we keep kids safe. But tomorrow at 8:30, I'm hoping to hear some things. If people are on social media today, I'm sure the governor's conference, or the commissioner's conference call will be plastered all over by 9:30. But there are communities that are tapping out right now for a length of time. We're not one of those communities at this point. Things might change after 8:30 tomorrow. Any questions or...
Any questions? Fred?
Jeff, for all of that information and ad work and...
Forgot about you, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Boyce.
If you want, actually, before that, George will talk a little bit about the outside-the-classroom learning experience that we've put together.
So one of the things we're trying to do is to make sure that there's an opportunity to continue learning. What does that look like? What will that look like? We have to take into account many different things. One of the things we have to take into account is what is the access of our families for the internet and for devices? If you look at the year-to-date, Infinite Campus Parent Portal, that's what parents have an account for, and that's what they use. You have to have some type of internet capability in order to do that. We have 93.46% of our parents who have that capability as of what they've told us, as of what they said. This is as of today. We average 4,835 different logins every week. So when you look at that, that is not everybody, but that is a large majority that have access to that. So one of the things then we're saying is, what happens if in case someone either doesn't have internet access, or what happens if someone doesn't have anything but a phone and they don't have a computer at home or a laptop at home? So what we're trying to figure out, and a lot of this is contingent upon tomorrow and what the governor says, is that we don't have enough laptop, we don't have enough Chromebooks for everyone here. Our Chromebooks are set up for our network. So for example, if you take one of our Chromebooks from a car and bring it home, you cannot log into it at home because it's looking for the Whitman Hansen network. So we've designed a way that we, in essence, if MCAS is either halted or stopped or whatever, we could then take a portion of those to make those available if someone were to contact us. We're only doing that if someone were to contact us because there is a large proportion of people who already have that internet. We're also gonna try to work that if we put something together, we have a myriad of resources from the new math program that we have, we have a myriad of resources from our burgeoning, one of our burgeoning ELA programs that we have, and we have things that are already in the district as far as Google Classroom and things like that. We also have to though come up with that paper packet, or that packet that's available for those that do not have access. All of these things are being worked on, worked out. We've talked to the union, we had a lead teacher meeting as early as yesterday and today where these things were coming up, where are the resources to keep education moving? What does that mean for accountability? What does that mean for grading? What does that mean for all of that? I don't have that answer yet, but that's what we're looking to move forward with.
George. Fred? Dan? Go ahead. George, do we have the bandwidth to handle students at home, working?
Do we have the bandwidth to handle what?
All those kids coming in from the outside into this building, into, from the district coming in?
You mean, do you have access from home?
Yes.
Yeah, we have a 10-gig network or whatever that we only use currently one to two for traffic, so we still have, what is it called, the eight solo bands that are available for it, so that shouldn't be an issue.
And I think we have even a second one that's redundant that can be tapped if needed. The Whitman Public Library has Verizon hotspots.
Okay.
I don't know exactly how many they have.
Yep.
But those would hopefully be available, and I don't know even if Verizon, you know, could make something like that available for us.
Well, I know that as early as 6:40 tonight, Comcast just put out that they're increasing speeds for families during this time, and they're increasing their platform for people who need it, because they do have a program that deals with a very low cost and the ability to even have a computer in your home. So there are a lot of people putting it out.
And I don't know if anybody from Hansen knows if the Hansen Library has those hotspots available.
I don't think so.
Yeah.
I don't know.
You know, that might be a resource for some families.
Yeah, I think once that becomes, if and when that becomes a reality, then we go from there.
Karine Cofato, Chair Trustee for the Hansen Library. We have many customers or patrons that will drive just in our parking lot and use the internet from their car with their laptops all the time. So there's 40 parking spaces there. So I don't know how far that goes, if you could park on the street and do that, but...
Park my driveway.
All right. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Don?
Jeff, can you tell us two buildings are being cleaned?
Yes. Conley and Duval this weekend. Conley and Duval are scheduled for this weekend. Just put that paper away. We are looking at Conley and Duval this weekend, and March 21st, Hansen Middle and Whitman Middle. March 22nd, Indian Head will be done, and March 28th and 29th, High School. Those are the tentative dates of schedule right now.
If the bus company needs a sub, a chemical, so to speak, to clean their buses, part of what I do gets involved with disinfection and whatnot, I'll be glad to donate to them, you know, a couple of packets of, you know, commercial disinfectant, they can read the MSDA labels and, you know, it's all EPA approved, it's all FDA, you know, everything's safe and non-toxic. Basically, they mix it up in a gallon pump sprayer, walk around, spray it, similar to what you see going on out in China.
Bring them over tomorrow, Fred. We'll bring them to transportation, I'll have Karen get them to them. That's fine.
Spray the stuff down, they don't even have to wipe it.
Yep. Appreciate that.
So that's what we have.
Chris?
So as a general comment, I would commend your leadership and thoughtfulness in what is certainly extraordinary times, so I am glad to hear you guys are thinking outside the box with some of these ideas, so keep at it.
Thank you.
We'll get through it.
We'll get, it's gonna, we're gonna get through it. It's a matter of growing pains, and when I said patience, this is a first time for all of us, and some people might like what we're doing and some people might not like what we're doing, but we're gonna do the best we can for all students that we have here. There's a lot of unanswered questions as far as MCAS, and, you know, that's a statewide, you know, assessment for graduation. We have AP exams coming up in May, and you have the state of Ohio shutting down for right now. So there's all that stuff that has to be worked out, and it's just such a ever-quickly-moving conversation through the course of the day. This morning at 9:00, no schools were canceled as of, by 6:00, when I left the house, there was a laundry list, and people were just going here and there. And I just, I want folks to know that this, the deep cleaning comes with a cost, and it comes with people, and it comes with trying to plan it out. So if I call up a company and I want them here, we're gonna pay for that service. If I want to push it for another weekend with our own folks, we have it scheduled, it's a different differential of cost. So, but that's something that we didn't, luckily, we have money from the snow budget this year. We've had a slow winter. Right. And I'm hoping, maybe if it snows, maybe this goes away, right? But we've been able to say, when I say to Ernie, "Yeah, you can spend that down because we have that," so I feel a little bit more flexibility. But I don't know what's coming in the next three weeks to four weeks. April vacation is five weeks away. It's gonna be a long five weeks.
Also, tomorrow's phone call is going to maybe answer some of these questions.
We're very hopeful for that.
If they call tomorrow and say, "This is an if, ladies and gentlemen. We're closed for 30 days."
Yep.
This is gonna change plan.
Correct.
So.
Correct.
And also the cleaning, keep in mind, if you clean two buildings and you put students back in those buildings, you are getting another whole...
The deep clean is very much like when we did last year at Conley. And we, I think we showed you pictures of all the workers masked up, and they use the sprayers and they sweep and they clean it up. It's a deep clean, it's a true deep clean.
And I want to say, but they're still cleaning regularly.
Yes.
You know, they're still cleaning regularly. Right.
Ellie?
I have a question about this. Where they've declared a state of emergency, and it might be a little too early to know. What do you think the chances are of getting reimbursed any of these expenses for cleaning? Right? Yeah, that pretty much sums it up.
I have heard no talk about reimbursement for any of these items at this point in time. I'm not sure the Commonwealth has that on their radar screen. Having said that, there is some discussion about perhaps the federal government may consider this to be an emergency, and maybe there's a hope that the federal money will flow, but that's just a hope.
In order for that to happen, the state has to hit a minimum. Municipalities, and I'm not sure how the district would fall under it, have to meet a threshold. Then on top of that, the state has to meet a threshold.
There's no false chance.
And I don't know what they'll put, well, who knows? I mean, it depends on what they put on it for a threshold, because that has changed over the years.
If they deal with it the way they deal with FEMA reimbursements, it, there are two things to know. One is it's somewhat complicated, and the other part is that, don't expect to see the money in a hurry.
Oh, it'll be years from now. Yeah. It's years from now.
It is not unusual for it to take a couple of budget cycles, and the federal government's budget is an October 1st budget, to work its way through.
They just pull it from education anyways, and they say they're reimbursing us.
Stan?
I know tomorrow's call means, you know, tells us everything, but if there is a 30-day, you know, cancellation, you know, there's so many variables for tomorrow, would they have to, if we had to make those up, would it be Saturday school?
Right now, the commissioner has said, and this is gonna depend on what he says tomorrow, he's not saying over 185. We're doing 185. So if we're out for 30 days, right now, 185 is June 19th.
June 19th is our 185 day.
This might be like an exclusion, one-time deal.
He's looking to waive that depending on...
We do 159 days, that's good enough of them.
We're not gonna be looking at April break.
It isn't like Conley last year.
Or Good Friday or any of those things. So I think that's the piece, and the governor and the commissioner came out, and the governor had said that, attendance isn't, let's be mindful of that, we're waiving that. The commissioner was out in front of that last week.
Because this will be statewide, not...
And he said, "No school can go past June 30th anyway." So even if that was changed to, you just have to go to June 30th, that would be on the normal...
Not enough days there.
That would be on the normal Monday to Friday schedule, so far as what we know.
Just so we can give people a heads up, things that, I mean, it's all a variable depending on tomorrow's meeting.
Right. And I want to, again, clarify, people shouldn't worry about the unexcused and the excused absences, and that's where I find some of my elementary parents are, "Is this an excuse? My son, my son has a little cold today, but I want to keep him home." Yeah, keep him home. It's an excused absence. We'll worry about that down the road, it's not a big deal, nobody's gonna call DCF.
And I just want to, on the accountability, that was from the commissioner, as of June, as of March 2nd, they stopped. They are stopping looking at data as a point to grade you for your school and district accountability. I'm not saying that children shouldn't come to school if we're open. I'm saying that the state has now stopped June, from March 2nd to the end of the year, making that portion of the year criteria for saying whether or not your school and district is progressing correctly.
So, just like to add two quick things. One is on the budget. They're talking about the state, you know, you're gonna see pretty much H1, the governor's budget, and not to be looking for much, if anything, in excess of that for this fiscal year, because they're looking at diminished revenues, et cetera. So I don't know that we would see, at least from the state level, any hopes of any reimbursements. I think it's gonna be a real tight year as far as that goes. Number two, I do want to say our administration has the full trust and confidence, at least of this school committee member, you guys are handling a lot of crazy stuff all at once.
Thank you.
You know, the one idea that I did have, and I was speaking to, and I wish I could remember who it was, is a woman earlier that was telling me how her son or daughter, I don't even know who, received a little survey from school, that, you know, asking, "Do you have internet access? Is it high-speed? Do you have a device, et cetera?" Maybe that wouldn't be the worst thing in the world to get that information from our pupils, and also, whenever we register somebody, maybe having that right on the registration so we would know.
Well, in our registration packet, when we talk about filling out the parent portal access, those questions are asked, "Do you have access at home?" And then that's how you get your parent portal access, so that's what we've been using for all district schools in order to find out what we have.
Okay, so you could access...
Yeah. And you might go to the Hansen parking, I mean, you might go to the parking lot, the Hansen Library, but you still have a device that's getting you on and going and logging into. Right.
And Katie? Chris?
So this is on this topic, but I don't know if this is something the committee wants to discuss now. We're not meeting again for two weeks. Certainly a hot topic at work right now is we're looking at no external meetings at all, everything telephonic, trying to cut down on face-to-face. So if we get to that point for next meeting, are we prepared to do this meeting telephonically? Is that something we should be talking about?
Good segue, we have some information.
Not what you want to hear. So MASC is Mass Associated School, we've been bombarded with this. So their response today was, "We have spoken with the Attorney General's Office around open meeting law issues and the requirement that a live quorum must be present in a meeting room for a meeting to be convened even with remote participation of other members. The Attorney General is not authorized under OML, open meeting law, to waive the requirement that there is a live quorum in the room for a meeting of a public body. The AG's office is aware of the special circumstances in which we find ourselves and indicate that the resolution may lie with the legislature if it is needed. It is possible that the legislature may be considering emergency legislation to address this, but that is premature speculation at this time." So they are looking at that, so it's not, it's not, it's a legislative issue. So yes. So the question was asked, if we could do this remotely, the answer is no. If we had six of you and Mr. Boyce here, it's a quorum, because we have six live and then one remote. But for some reason, I have a feeling the legislature's gonna look at this rather quickly, given the circumstances right now. But that's as of 4:00 this afternoon.
I can make a phone call tomorrow and try and see if I can get anything pushed along.
So if, awesome, so I think if, if the legislator, legislature supports that, and that's a broader issue for all meetings, I know we have other town officials here, and God forbid something happens, you don't have anyone showing up to the meetings anyways.
Correct.
I think they gotta get in front of it. Are we prepared from a technology standpoint? Could we do it remotely? Could we have the infrastructure ready?
I think we could do that.
Yeah, you could go to meeting. We have the capability set up to go to meeting.
I was going to say, I could even...
We do that. We've done that in the past.
We talked about this a little bit today when I met with Jeff and George. There's a possibility, and we didn't have enough time to look into it to tonight, but if this board had to meet in a quorum type, we would probably see if the public... You know, if we just met and televised it like we do, to keep the amount of people down, you know, that would be here. Because sometimes we have 40, 50, 60 people in the gallery and that constitutes what they're talking about with CDC. So we talked about this earlier, Chris, and we're going to check into it and see.
And I'll get that information out as it comes, but that's something that we've actually thought about.
It's going so fast and we have 13 days before the next meeting and I look at what's happened over the last 13 days.
I can't agree with you more.
At worst, we can just draw straws and the closest have to come and...
Take 10 feet apart. That's the distancing. That's it.
Just give me a hand.
Well, I think I'm second in seniority, right? You're first than me. I'm good.
All right.
I did want to really say thank you to both boards of health. Lisa Tobin, our lead nurse, has been doing yeoman's work. Both fire chiefs have reached out to me and said, "Anything you need, Jeff, we're here for you." So the community support for the schools has been outstanding and they're involved in the planning and every aspect of this. I told boards of health, "If I get any information about any parent or anything like that, they're the first to know so they can put the rest of the community on notice and then we go from there." So we're transparent in everything that we do as far as student health. We are careful of HIPAA though, and we need to make sure that as information gets out, we don't bully our peers, adults and adults and kids and kids. And it's a HIPAA violation to say, "Hey, so-and-so has what..." And so we're mindful of that and I want to let the community know that too because we don't want to go down the path of, you know, segregating folks because of something that they have or they might have or might not have. So, thank you.
This is probably a first-time occurrence for a lot of people in this room in their whole entire life. So err on the side of caution when any of that happens, as Judge and Jeff are talking about, because there are HIPAA rules and lots of different things. We're treading into a situation that I don't think any of us has ever seen. This happened so quickly, so rapidly. So, any other questions? Okay, next.
John, you want to pass over on the...
We're going to pass over...
We're going to pass over on online item transfers. There will be some coming up, but quite honestly, my focus has been on the budget. And I was talking about last year's budget because the last meeting we had, you got a copy of the expenditure report and things looked reasonably good and falling in the same spending pattern as last year. But that was last week. And so we're going to have to spend some time looking at this current year budget and identify those accounts that will have some surpluses perhaps and be thoughtful about what accounts are going to have some deficits. That's a work in progress at this point in time.
Mars concentration?
So we had a meeting, I called the superintendent's meeting on March 4th. There's been some questions from a couple of selectmen in both communities around Chapter 70 and Chapter 70 money and how it's deducted or how it's given to the district. And DESI gives us Chapter 70 money in one lump sum. And about a month and a half ago on social media, different formulas were being circulated in both communities as to what Chapter 70 is and how it's allocated to the communities. So I invited members of Mars in for a business meeting. And present at that meeting was Steve Hemmend from Mars, the executive director of Mars, Maureen Marshall, myself, Mr. Tuffey, Mr. Hayes, Mr. Pharoah, Mr. LaMontina, Mr. Lyneum, Mr. Evans, Mr. McCormick, Mr. Sandberg and Ms. Kemet from each community. And what... Steve asked me, "What do you want out of this meeting?" And I said, "Well, can you tell us how Chapter 70..." There's a formula out there that Mars is using and certain members of MASC are using to say how much a town in a region actually gets in Chapter 70. So Steve came in and he circulated a document which broke down our Chapter 70 per town. The thing about that Chapter 70, we need to take into account that we receive $4.6 million in hold harmless. So our district is getting quite a bit. So just to clarify for the folks at that meeting, and it's the selectmen in particular, select people in particular, that were really struggling with the way Chapter 70 was. Steve said what Hanson is getting in Chapter 70 based upon 2021 budget estimations and minimum local and what Whitman is getting. So it was clear that it wasn't just a document that was being shared around social media. The other piece that I asked Steve to talk about was deregionalization a little bit. So there'd been talk from the committee about deregionalization and even members of the community had asked about deregionalization and what that means. So Steve gave me, and I can share with the committee, two communities that went through a process and they hired a consulting firm, Spencer East Brookfield and Dennis Yarmuth in the past. Dennis Yarmuth was 2011, Spencer East Brookfield, that was a little bit more recent. But they hired a consulting firm to come in and look at soup to nuts what it would cost to deregionalize those communities. I have that document for you to share and I have those names of those consulting firms if we, as a school committee, if members of the town want to consult or hire those committees or those businesses to come in and do this assessment for us. The challenge is there, it's going to cost us $10,000 to $20,000 to do that. What both communities found was it wasn't financially feasible to deregionalize either of those communities. The other piece that Steve said about deregionalization was it would take time, two to three years, maybe sometimes up to five, to actually separate our two communities based upon what the commissioner said and the nuts and bolts of educating kids. So he didn't frown upon it, so to speak, but he also said it wasn't an easy process and there was a cost to that. So not only the cost to deregionalize, but to have a consulting firm to come out and do it, give you the items that you might have to do, and then there's a legal cost to that on top of just owning your own district. The third thing we talked about too was the state and whether or not the state should come in and take over our communities as far as the finances of the school department. And both he and Maureen were extremely down on that, saying, "What the state will do, we'll come in and this happens, this happens a couple of times. We'll come in and give you the fiscal budget from the year before and that's where you start." And the state necessarily doesn't come in and say, "Oh, this is what you're looking for. Here you go." Both communities pony up and do that. They might have a conversation of what's affordable for both communities, potentially. Potentially. And that might not be what we're asking for to keep level service at this point. And those two communities have to agree. He said there's pain to that. And he reiterated to both communities that having the state come in is not something that you should be looking for. A member of the group actually asked and said, "You know, where does the state get the money or get the idea or get the minimum local assessment?" And they talked about DOR and the Department of Revenue does that. And that member actually said, or that person actually said, "Can we sue the DOR? Can we look into that?" And Maureen said, "Yes, New Braintree can sue that every year." They consult with DOR and said, "Our tax rates are not what you're saying." And they bring suit against the DOR. She said that happens frequently. But basically, the takeaway is where Chapter 70 can be broken down through a formula minus the $4.6 million that we have in hold harmless that's just out there. Deregionalizing is a process. It's a costly process. And whether or not it's fiscally feasible for both communities is up to the towns or the study that you're going to pay for. And having the state come in and look at your finance is a process and sometimes a painful process moving forward. So that's what we met about and I just wanted to share with the committee, that's what we did. So it wasn't like we had a secret meeting. It was a business meeting with me. There wasn't a quorum of school committee. There wasn't a quorum of select people there. It was something they had asked me to do and we wanted to get Steve and Maureen in so that we had information straight from the horse's mouth, so to speak, instead of the stuff that's flying around on social media.
Anyone have any questions? Mr. Boyce, are you still with us?
Of course I am.
Okay.
I'm doing.
As a school committee member, I wouldn't want to be wasting money on a deregionalization. That's not our job. If the towns want to fork over money to do that, you know, that's up to those individual towns. This school doesn't have any money to be throwing it out the window for a study like that.
I concur with what Mr. Cohen said.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Anyone else?
Hi. Last week I mentioned...
Name and address and town and...
Rosemary Conley, Whitman, Massachusetts, 405 Franklin. Last week I mentioned a piece of literature in audit done by Suzanne Bump's office on regional schools. And in that audit, it states, "Anything under 3,000 students would be too costly to deregionalize." Just so that people know, I did recommend that you read it. It would eliminate the need for any study or cost to be done for deregionalizing and be a great cheap option to start to move that conversation forward.
I think, Ms. Conley, I think Ruth actually sent that audit to the committee a couple of years back. It's about two years old, right?
Yeah.
It's on regional schools.
It came out in October.
I can let you know, I can forward that out to you, but it's a pretty good audit. It's going to open your eyes on regionalization.
We also had, from Suzanne Bump's office, Dr. Charles Tafoya, who was one of the major contributors.
Right. That was this year or was that last year? I can't remember now. October seems so, so far away.
Well, no, the report came out in October of 18, I believe.
Right, right. The report came out.
Dr. Tafoya was, I think, this school year anyways. I think. I'm trying to remember.
But I can get that for you guys and do that. That's a good point.
Anyone else have any questions about this? Okay, continue.
So on Monday, John sent me and I forwarded to you the operating assessments for both the budget that we put forward for required. And then he also sent, gave you numbers for adding those four teachers that we discussed last week. I also sent those along to some of the select folks that are working on talking and trying to figure this out. So they have that number. I assume both boards of selectmen, and I sent it to both town administrators as well. So I assume both boards of selectmen have seen the numbers that I sent you exactly. Basically, what you asked for is the numbers of the operating assessment for required and then adding the four teachers from the recommended based upon what some of the members of the community said, based upon our recommendation of where class sizes will be next year if we don't add those teachers. So you have those on Monday. I don't know if you ran off a copy. I have a copy here. But I'm open to hear or that's up for discussion right now.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to hit you.
I do want to say, John has had conversations, this has to be updated, just with capital from Hanson. John had a conversation with Todd on Tuesday and I don't know if you want to speak to what they want to do.
So when you look at the assessments under Hanson HVAC, which was the air conditioning projects at some schools in Hanson, it says TBD, to be determined. And that really is about the timing and the term and those sorts of things that will go with the debt. And the town is looking at using debt, not paying it out of free cash. And based upon some of the latest email exchanges, it looks like we have come to an agreement that they would be looking for a payment of $22,300 for interest. I sent that final number to Todd just this morning. I haven't heard back, but my expectation is that's what he's looking at. If and when we finally add that additional number, it will only affect Hanson's assessment. It won't affect the Whitman assessment at all. And it is completely and totally for a project that goes to Hanson, much as the technology project that affected only Hanson's assessment.
Just to remind folks that the technology portion only affected Hanson because Whitman paid for theirs all upfront and Hanson decided to pay it out over a few years. But this is a very specific capital item that's going into the Hanson Middle School, I believe.
It is in already. It is in already. It's phase two, yeah. It was done in two phases.
As far as getting back to the discussion on the budget, I understand the required did not include those four teachers?
No, those were from recommended. We moved them up.
And that was broken out by one teacher at Conley, one in Duval?
Right now, based on class sizes, I'm short in Duval, I'm short in Indian Head and I'm short at the high school.
Okay. And you would need the four teachers, two at the high school or...
One at the high school, two at Duval and one at Indian Head, based on numbers that we have right now. So four. Conley right now, I'm okay. The challenge with Conley is we've had 17 move-ins since October and the developments are filling.
There are 200 units in Whitman that'll be fully online from what everyone says by the beginning of next school year. So they're starting to see that now, but we don't have...
We don't have that.
I don't really know who's actually in there, but there have been 17 move-ins in Conley this year.
So with these, with the four teachers, would you say that that's your number one priority outside of the required? In other words, we have required.
Yes. As we said last week, based upon the numbers that we had and based upon the feelings of members of the committee and members of the community and the teachers themselves, 28 students in a fourth grade class isn't where we want to be optimally. I'd like to have it between 22 or, you know, for grade three plus, you know, 25 is okay. Under that, and we have classes in first and second grade of 26, I'd like that to be 19 and 20. And that's where we can go if we can get additional staffing. So those four teachers, and my high school science is bulging. And that's an area we cut last year. We cut a teacher in chemistry last year due to the budget and that's an area that we are struggling with right now.
So just from my own knowledge, so that would place at Duval, a fourth grade into fifth grade or a third grade?
Eventually it would be moved to a first and a second. I mean, there has to be restructuring that the principal allows it to do. But the bulging areas right now are right now and will be first and second. Then you're looking at a fourth grade at Indian Head and then chemistry for the high school, various grade levels by chemistry.
Okay, what would the class sizes be with those additions?
Right now, I'm guessing between 19 and 22, give or take.
And without them, they're at...
26 and 27.
26 and 27.
Indian Head has one at 28. Yeah, Indian Head has a class of 28.
And fourth grade at Indian Head has a class of 28. And that doesn't count any move-ins.
Right. That's just on right now numbers.
I understand. And the high school teacher for science, how would that affect class size?
It would lower class size, but also offer more, because this is a chemistry position, you would have the ability to not have that chemistry position shared by teachers who are also bio-certified in chemistry or physics certified in chemistry. Brings it back, creates more offerings, not only in chemistry for students, but also in lowest class size in the biology ones because that person doesn't have to teach. Let's say four chemistries. They can go back to two chemistries and two bios.
I mean, and this is me and you folks are the experts, not me. But to me, I would think first and second graders, it would be imperative to have the class size lower. You know, attention span, kids being kids, et cetera. Fourth graders, 28 kids, even I get that. It's too many. You know, the high school, could we do without that one teacher and maybe lower that 280 down?
Yeah, the only issue is that you're having a certification. We're butting a certification issue because kids have to take it and we have people who are teaching that, who are teaching more than one class outside their certification area currently. That leads to an accountability issue with DESI. So in that riff, that's what we saw. That's what we had to assume. That's what we had to basically suck up. But what we're trying to do is rectify that accountability issue of a teacher teaching outside of their certification area for some of those sections.
Don?
In the class reports that I've seen, so we talked about Indian Head, fourth grade, Duval, first and second grade. Duval, fourth grade has three teachers right now. And it looks like the third grade, the total students is 77. So that third grade moving up to three teachers would keep that very close to that 25 threshold with a couple at 26. So it's not only those four that we just talked about, but a potential there. It seems like it's right at the threshold, but should we have some move-ins, it's going to push that. You may not know that until August and...
Well, it's like a balloon, you know? You fix one, you get that one nice and then something pops out the other side.
Right. So I just wanted to bring that up, that it's not just those three. We've got others that are right at the breaking point, close. Yeah.
Mike?
John, what would that breakdown be to Hanson roughly?
It would be that number, $22,300. It would be the interest on debt specifically for...
To add four teachers?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
No, sorry.
I got that for you, Mike, right here.
Is it the 112?
So...
Hanson would gain one teacher at Indian Head and technically half of a teacher at the high school. What would that fund, what would that amount be?
Just...
Total.
Total amount. Hanson's assessment next year... Total amount. Hanson's assessment next year with the four, with the four teachers is 12 million.
I guess what I'm asking is the breakdown of just that additional?
112,000, $112,000. Is that what that would be, the difference?
Yeah.
What was it?
112,000, 112...
Once you get past, once you get past, once you get past minimum contribution, everything is strictly...
Sixty, forty.
Or, it's actually up to two decimal points. It's slightly more, but, but yes, it's sixty, it's sixty, forty for...
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And understand, even with the four teachers, we're still understaffed, you know. This is just trying to get back, knowing the entire budget where we're at. We're just trying to build back from the areas that we cut last year. And my concern is, coming to the committee, with those units going in in Hanson, in Whitman, and when I say units, it's single-family homes as well as condominium units. Just like the units that went into Hanson a couple of years back, as they develop and grow, our class, the needs are going to be there. The, Karen Downey saying 17 move-in from October, that takes a hit to our student population there, and that's going to continue to grow. That's great for the communities. It's more revenues for the towns, and it's good for us as we build, but our class size piece are going to be impacted. What I don't want the committee to do is get too wrapped up into class size too, you know. That is an overflowing thing, and it's building-based, and it's up to the principals to determine where they feel the needs are based upon the needs of that particular class as well. There might be a class that has more students that have more special needs, and more individualized needs, and they might want that class to be smaller than the next grade level, whose students are functioning in a little bit better. So we have to give the principals the autonomy to put people in places. Our job here, in our, in our spot, is make sure they have the tools, and the tools are their teachers. So that's why I'm asking the committee to look at that. And Fred, that would be our top priority, moving up from that recommended area down below.
Would you consider it almost a necessity? And I do want to preface, at least my part of the conversation with, I'm fully cognizant of the fact that we do not and are not funding our schools to the level that we should. That being said, there's blood out of a stone, and we have to be cognizant of what the towns can afford at this point.
Well, I think, I think, I think, yes, I think we think it's a necessity. I think if you're a parent of a student in that class, you think it's a necessity. I think if you're a teacher in that class, you think it's a necessity. I think if you worked at that building, you'd think it's a necessity. So, yeah, I'm going to say I think it's a necessity. Okay?
And I'll say, we presented a budget last year that we thought was a necessity. We cut 1.9 million.
Right.
So, yeah.
Groundhog Day.
You know, so I mean, that is, that's, we are, we're just trying to prioritize that piece, fully knowing we can't get blood out of a stone as well, you know. We're cognizant of that, and both cognizant of the communities. But if we can start to build back, if we can start to build back with our, with our, we did last year with our council, now building back with the class size piece and formulating the education that we think our kids deserve, that's a step in the right direction.
Mr. Kafka, would you like to speak on this?
Kevin Kafka, high school history teacher, and also WHA, certainly echo what was said. Got a lot of things to consider. Priorities, probably everyone is there, right? Certainly the class size, and probably can speak to the research that supports, you know, smaller class size and others, certainly an issue. I know that there's constantly moving numbers, right? Especially populations up and down, folks coming in, so I think you have to look at kind of building that base with the idea that maybe parts are moved or adjusted as we go, because those kids are going to stay in the district. The other thing too, I think it was mentioned, but just to clarify, certainly needs at the, obviously, all the levels, but at the high school level, certainly when you think about something specific as far as, you know, chemistry, there's some flexibility of what teachers can teach outside of their license, but that's only for a certain amount of time, right? So the idea is that if we're going away from the chemistry piece or the science piece, certainly that would limit options for students at the, you know, AP Chem level or others. In a sense, maybe that goes away without the, you know, appropriate staffing. So I would say that would all play in as part of, you know, priorities for the district, you know, K all the way up.
Thank you, Kevin.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
May I propose an approval of the FY 2021 local assessments? I know you need the whole budget number, and I don't recall my number from last week, but I would like to go with John's number-two scenario would be operating assessments to the two towns with a total of 27 million, 181, 568, 54. But I'm sure you need something more than that.
Wouldn't think that's it?
So it's kind of, it's kind of a motion, but I'm also just looking, because I'm just living here with just a little limited access to information.
Okay. Are you sure it's not 27, 401, 067, 54?
No, I think, he was looking at less, the non-mandated transportation.
I was just mentioning operating, yeah, the non-mandated, I didn't include...
He's just looking at, Steve was just looking at the operating part of it, not including...
Operating part. Maybe I should go with the operating assessment?
Yes, above the...
All right, so motion for the FY 2021 local assessments.
Yeah, he got her.
At a total of 27 million, 681, 067, 54.
Yeah.
And the assessments divided Hanson, 12 million, 123, 655, 54, and Whitman, 15 million, 557, 412 dollars.
Should be less than non-mandated busing, shouldn't it?
What's that? Hold on one second, Mr. Bush.
Shouldn't, wasn't he right the first time, less than non-mandated busing?
Well, actually, I certainly feel free to correct me, but my recollection of having looked at past, at past budgets here is that you vote an operating assessment that does not include mandated busing, and then you separately vote an assessment for mandated for, for non-mandated, non-mandated busing, and then a separate capital assessment. Is that accurate?
Typically, just vote the operating budget and the two local assessments. We don't really break out that capital stuff, only in the letter.
Only in the letter, so that's what I'm thinking about, is the letter that goes out.
Yeah.
So I stand corrected, so...
So the operating budget and the two assessments.
So you would want the 28 million, 248, 937, plus... Oh, actually, no, there it is, right there, 28 million, 528, 937. Is that right?
That includes...
Add it all up, it is.
Budget amount?
I can change my numbers if you'd like.
Well, anybody want to second that, want to do?
I'll second.
Second it, discuss. Don't second it, just make a new motion for the right price, so we're not doing no amendments.
What was the motion?
To set the assessment.
Set the assessment at 27, 181, 568, 54 cents. Anybody want to second that, or they want to make a new motion?
I'll make the motion to set the assessment, including non-mandated busing, capital for the high school, and the capital items to the town of Hanson at 28 million, 528,937 dollars, with the...
Okay.
Mr. Bush, did you withdraw your motion, please?
I'll withdraw my original motion and second Mr. Small's motion.
Okay, we didn't second it anyway, so you're in... Mr. Small, we have a second for Mr. Conley, is that correct?
I believe so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Bush.
You just said it to Hanson for 28...
Discussion? No.
No. What I heard him just say is, set it to the town of Hanson for 28 something, is that?
No, 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 the total assessment...
That's not what I heard you say.
Okay, let me re-clarify my motion. To set the total assessment at 28 million, 528,937 dollars. That includes the operating budget, the non-mandated busing, the capital for the high school, and the capital items for the town of Hanson.
Technology.
Yeah, technology, and I guess the HVAC will be a number to be determined.
Does everyone understand that?
Yes.
Yes.
That's the bottom. Discussion?
So, just the only thing is, we, I don't know if John's working hard, just what he said about Todd's conversation, we don't have the capital from the HVAC in here. So if you set that operating budget, that's without Hanson's capital piece per Todd's conversation.
What did Todd say was holding that up?
We had gone back and forth about what, what would fit in the, what would fit in the town's budget, and what they were looking to, to do, because they want to fit this in with existing debt that they have, and some of which will be running off. And so I believe what I finally sent to him was what he was looking for, but I sent that this morning, and I haven't heard back from him. I'm reasonably confident we've come to an agreement, and frankly, we are not, I don't think there's a disagreement that this is an obligation that Hanson will, will pay. And the question comes, what are the terms that best fit Hanson? And since this is fully paid for by Hanson, the district has no particular, no particular position on how it should be structured.
Maybe, Mrs. Kamit, can lighten us, Laura?
I'm afraid I can't on that particular item. I'm sure Todd will get back to you.
I'm sure he will.
We, we run a pretty tight ship up at Town Hall. Todd works one day a week, so...
And frankly, I'm not here every day of the week, so there's a lot of emails going back and forth to try to resolve this.
I, here, Laura Kamit, Chair of the Board of Selectmen of Hanson, and I appreciate the perspective that you each have got, being on the school committee. What's really troubling to me is, I've stood here nearly every school committee meeting that you guys have had, at the risk of being boring. I've tried to talk to the town of Whitman about this. The move to statutory that has been imposed by Whitman on Hanson this year is one that we are struggling to accommodate. And as a board, we're trying to work to make that happen. But if you set the assessment at the place that you just talked about, I can assure you that you've left me nothing to go back to my voters and the citizens of Hanson with. It's just not going to happen. And effectively, if you set it at that, you're going to be putting a ball in motion that I am powerless to stop, which is, and we've gone through this ad nauseam, so I'm not going to go through the details, but we're going to end up at a super-town meeting, we're going to end up with the state taking over. And I know people don't think it's a bad thing, but when the Mars folks came last week, they assured us, it is a bad thing. The Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools said, you do not want the state to come in. You don't. You don't want them to come in in July, and you definitely don't want fiscal control to be taken over in December. So I guess this is just my way of, one more time with feeling, saying, I am pleading with you. If you really care about the schools, and you really care about preserving this partnership, you're going to dig deep and do the absolute best you can, because I assure you that's what we're doing. I've got Todd, and I've got John, thank God for John this year, digging in and sharpening the pencil, and looking for all kinds of ways that we can possibly save money, including cuts. We're willing to go to the table and think about a modest override, but, you know, we cannot eviscerate our whole town government because you guys have decided the same year that we're getting the assessment moved to statutory, that you're going to go for the gusto on this budget. And I appreciate you listening, and that's really all I've got to say about it. I'm really looking for some more partnership, and I'm not feeling it right now. I'm hoping this is early in the meeting.
Fred, and then Chris.
Just out of curiosity, is it the 112,000 for the additional teachers, or were you expecting or hoping for something different? I'm just curious.
And realistically, Fred, the 112,000 is the least of my concerns. And I recognize where you guys are coming from in terms of trying to get class sizes down. Frankly, I'd like to see foreign languages restored to every, to all of the middle school kids, and there's a bunch of other stuff I'd like to see, but you can't do it all in one year, and you certainly, I would urge you not to do it in a year when your partners in Hanson are struggling to try to accommodate the statutory methodology. I don't think I've stuttered. I don't think I could be any clearer in saying this to you guys. You're putting a ball in motion, and there are going to be unintended consequences and collateral damage, that I don't think any of us can predict. So, no, it is not the 112.
So you were looking, okay. That's all I want to clarify.
Mr. Howard?
So, through you, Mr. Chairman, I think I've, again, I don't want to repeat the same thing over and over and over again as well, but I'm going to continue to maintain that a budget for this year should have some sort of compromise. Heard it from the state. I've said it again, I've said it enough times, I'm not going to keep saying it. So my question through you to Ms. Kamit is, has there been any compromise formally reached between the towns of Whitman and Hanson that would establish a type of compromise so the full statutory method is not being assessed to the town of Hanson this year?
Okay, well, so the way that that works is that, again, I know, ad nauseam, we've heard this a million times, right? You've got two ways that you can do the assessment. You've got the regional agreement method, which currently is per pupil, but we've, you guys just voted to open up that agreement and have a conversation, given the fact that we can see the way that the deck is stacked, and that, in fact, statutory is preferred by the state, and one way or another, the state will get statutory. They've made it pretty clear. All the regulations end up leading to that. So you've got regional, which we've, you guys have already voted not to use. So then you've got statutory. So the only other, the only way you could get to what you're suggesting, Mr. Howard, is when this regional agreement is opened back up again, and we sit down and talk, is to talk about a transition to statutory. And it needs to be agreed upon by all parties. It would need to also be agreed upon by DESI. Probably the way you'd have to structure it would be that whatever you have that you're voting on at town meeting would be contingent upon the regional agreement passing at both town meetings. Don't know that that would happen, I'm not sure. Again, I would really hope that if, if people's intention is to preserve the partnership and to move the needle on education, then, then one town is not going to take a measure against another town that's going to upset that apple cart. And I completely appreciate where the folks from Whitman are coming from. I get the perspective that, you know, three and a half million dollars they've spent that they didn't need to spend, but Hanson didn't do that to anybody, okay? It was, it was something that was universally, everybody thought that's the way it was working, okay? My board did not know that it was supposed to work any differently. I don't have any reason to believe any other boards realized it was supposed to work any differently. The votes were taken at town, at both town meetings, all, both towns agreed, you guys agreed, the Board of Selectmen agreed, everybody, ad nauseam, historically agreed, okay? So it is not Hanson doing anything to Whitman or to the district. This year, however, I will say that it does feel very much like Whitman is doing something to Hanson. I'm trying to fight that urge, I'm trying not to give in to that sentimentality, and the only way I can do that is if I start to feel some spirit of cooperation from the Whitman members of the school committee and from the Whitman Board of Selectmen. And to answer your question, whether an actual agreement has been struck, and I'm sorry, that was a long-winded explanation to your question, I would say that in principle, we have come up with some things that I think might at least demonstrate an olive branch from the town of Whitman. It isn't backing off of statutory, but it might make people feel a little bit better. I'm not at liberty to particularly disclose it, because it's not my dog in the fight. It's Whitman that, you know, I don't know who they've discussed it with, whether they've taken approval or anything like that, and I really wouldn't want to speak out of turn.
So...
Keep going, Chris.
To clarify, there is no formal compromise, there is no formal agreement in place presently. It's a work in progress.
There is no formal compromise in place presently.
Thank you.
There is discussion. And I will say, things have been quite collegial, and we have never deteriorated into name-calling, or finger-pointing, or anything of that sort amongst the few members of our Board of Selectmen that are meeting. And I hope to preserve that, because I don't want to be doing things or taking actions that are going to dismantle this relationship. And to Ms. Conley's earlier point about the deregionalization, I don't think that there's anybody on either one of the Boards of Selectmen that is advocating for deregionalization, or even really particularly wants it to happen. However, we have to be responsive to what our voters and our citizens are asking us. And it is a question, and it's an obvious question, that if I were sitting out there in the seat of a citizen... in the seat of a citizen, I would be asking my elected officials as well, is, well, how the hell can these guys do this to us? And we should just deregitalize and get out of the system. It's a bit of a knee-jerk reaction, and I don't think financially it will prove to be fiscally responsible for either town. We've got the regional transportation money on the table and the whole harmless money that's on the table, and it's a huge, huge hit to both towns if that money wasn't part of this equation. So I don't think, I don't think anybody is really advocating for deregionalization, but we do need to go through the process of looking at the costs just so that I can be able to say in good faith, full faith and confidence to people, look, we looked at it. We're gonna lose X amount of dollars, and here's the other things we need to consider and those types of things. So I generally know what that is, but we don't have the actual hard numbers, so.
Fred, then Robbie.
I'm good, mine actually good answer. Thank you.
And no, Hanson hadn't played no part in not knowing about statutory and, has ever come across that way from my mouth, take my apology, because this isn't on quote-unquote Hanson as far as that goes. That being said, we're forgetting one important person, and that's the voter. It goes to town meeting. It doesn't matter what the agreement says. It doesn't matter what the selectmen have come up with. If it goes to town meeting, the voter has the right to approve or disapprove the assessment method. And I think a lot of people are going to vote with their wallets, especially when you talk the big swings. And, you know, it goes to, let's say we said, hey geez, let's do that agreement method one more time. But it goes to town meeting, and the voter now knows they have an option, which they should have known all along. That's something.
Nothing we can do about that now.
And they decide, they'll approve the budget, but they won't approve the assessment method. Then it comes back to the school committee, and like you said, it's stacked.
I'm not suggesting, I have not said that we should go back to the regional method. I can see the writing on the wall. We've talked to our council, we've gotten second opinions, we've talked to the legislature. I mean, the number of people that I've talked to about this is exhausting, okay? I feel quite comfortable that we have turned over every stone as a board, or at least I personally have, in looking at this. And so I feel confident, although I'm not thrilled with, you know, what the end result is, I can see the writing on the wall. It's quite clear. What I'm saying to you is to force that on another town in one year is really, it is, we'll say ungentlemanly. I will refrain from saying what I truly in my heart of hearts believe it is. I think it's ungentlemanly. But it's, you know, the ball has sort of started to roll that way, and so we're trying to work in good faith in trying to make this work. But to your point, Fred, do I know if voters are going to pass it over? I don't know, but I feel confident that if your leadership and my leadership both really work on this and say, you know what, guys, we're doing the best we can for both of the towns, this is a tricky little situation, we're gonna get through this year, and then we're gonna take another look at what we're gonna do long-term, I feel pretty confident that people don't want to see this district dismantled, they don't want to see it eviscerated, and they don't want to see the partnership. Of course, you've always got people throwing potshots and, you know, and trying to, you know, trying to ravel brows, but the general, you know, sentiment seems to be, we want to try to work together. And what people are having difficulty understanding in Hanson is, where is that partnership? They keep saying, I don't see it, I don't see it, like, well, we're working on it. You know, there's nothing solid right now, but we are working on it. So I don't know if that answered your question.
Hopefully, you know, you can, from my perspective, this is for me. Bless you. Looking at, you know, what we're proposing for a budget, does not restore the, how much did we cut last year, Jeff? Million?
One point nine.
How much?
One million.
One point nine million that we cut last year. To be able to suffer any more cuts, we were hoping to tread water, and I think, you know, with the four teachers, that's something that is just an, almost an emergency type of situation for our kids.
I hear that, Fred, but...
And don't get me wrong, you guys are in an emergency situation as well.
And honestly, if Whitman was to come forward and say, you know what, we'll modify, we'll, you know, if it was a partnership, I think we might be able to get there. If you guys were able to come down a little off of, you know, off of the expectations, hearing that you've cut in the past, hearing, you know, that you've had austerity measures in the past, we can come up a little, Whitman can maybe give, this is what I'm trying to get to, is everybody's going to have to give. This isn't a Hanson problem. It's not a district problem, and it's not a Whitman problem. It's suddenly become a Hanson problem this year, like quicker than, you know, you could, you know, imagine, but that's not right. It's not right that it's become a Hanson problem. So anyway, I didn't mean to speak as long as I did, but people had a lot of questions, Bob, so.
Mr. Colley, and then Dawn.
Just want to make sure I don't lose track of what I gotta say and be correct here. Thank you for your time looking into that with Randy and other people. I mean, I've talked to colleagues here and some of the people here, selectmen and things. I understand what you're saying, and, you know, sometimes I wish they would just get together, because it's basically a suck pill to take that whole thing in one shot, and I agree with that. I just wish they can get together and come up with a mechanism, which is going to have to go back to the regional agreement, open that up, come up to a quick solution of maybe doing 60-41 year, 80-20 the next year, and then you're in full. Doesn't help you out really super much, but it's something, and that's what I wish, that both towns can get together and get that done. Because like you said on your statement, and that's been my fear, is getting state control. You know, like I said last week, can't pass a budget anyways, unless one of the Hanson people say, I like these numbers.
And that's a horrible position to put them in, too.
It's not gonna happen with these guys.
Yeah, but see, like, that's the thing, is like, really, ideally, you guys really want to work just for the district, right, for the kids, right? You guys don't want to divide along town lines? That's insane, but that's what's been happening. And it's been forced, you know, it's sort of like forced into that position.
Yeah, because our charges for these students and then secondary, you know, then secondary, we go back because we have constituents too. But that shouldn't, these towns should get together because it has been recommended. You don't give somebody a big ass bill like that over on the dime. And it doesn't matter what other people think. This is the same, because I love the school system, it's going backwards, and if the towns don't get together and try to cut that in, we're gonna get no budget set up and we're going into state receivership. They're gonna take over this budget. It's not the way to go. And I wish they would get together, Laura, Randy, everybody, and come up with a solution, open up this regional agreement, get this solution done. It's like pushing it off one year for the full bill. I'd rather see something like that happen than lose this district to the state. I mean, that's basically what we have to do. You have to play nice with each other. Is this something everybody wants to do? No. Women's gonna, of course, say, no, I'm sick of paying these bills, but you also, it's kind of hard to swallow that we sat on this for so long and now we just found it, and it is kind of hard to have Hanson eat that all at once. They do have to come up with some type of phase, and whether it's one year, two year, to get them over the hump. Is it fiscally, you know, fiscally on both sides? No, it's, both towns don't have the money.
I agree with Mr. Conway.
There should be some type of compromise.
Hold on, Mr. Voice, I've got a line of speakers.
Yeah, there should be some kind of compromise, and it isn't going to be with the school committee. That's why, you know, we've been unknown what you guys have been doing behind, but hearing whispers, you're kind of close to things, but it's just got to get done. Because, you know, we go into that state taking over, you know, if I had kids coming up in the system, I'd be pulling them out real quick because the system's gone. You know, towns got to come together, resolve this, and come up with some type of solution. I mean, that's what I'd like to see, a slow cut in, quick, but not too drawn out. But you can't just hit them up all at once with this big swing. Bring it in just a little bit and then, you know, maybe next year, go to the full thing. But trying to, you guys got to realize, we can't get a budget if you can't get a handsome person to vote on the budget. We need seven votes. You know, and something's got to come up with this, because if we can sit here tonight, we get five votes, five to four, budget ain't gonna carry. We need seven people to carry this budget.
Dawn.
Thank you, dear.
The one important person we're not talking about are the kids, and I was elected to represent the students of this district. We have voters who will vote at Town Hall, but all our students, unless they're a senior in high school and they're 18 and they can stand on that Town Hall floor, none of our students have a voice. They're silent because they're the kids, they're under 18. So I sit here as their voice, and I'm speaking up on behalf of them in support of a budget that gives them what they need. And this budget doesn't even give them everything they need. But we cannot cut anything. We need these four teachers for the students. I've been following school committee meetings for quite a few years now, and I've never heard anything added to the budget more than a level service. And the towns have benefited since 1993 in the Education Reform Act, and millions of dollars in state aid coming into the district to fund education while the towns have the ability to not fund as much. So when we talk about collateral damage, it is the kids, it is the students who have lost time. The kids that are in eighth grade right now, and they lost that foreign language learning they had last year. And the half-day kindergarten that doesn't have the opportunity, I don't see how we can cut anything.
Mr. Hayes. Robbie.
Indulge me just for a second, because I'm trying to do some outside-the-box thinking with this, because this got put upon us by the state years ago, nobody realized it. And I already know the answer to some of the questions, but I think it's worthwhile to go back to the state on, so just hand me out for a second. I know typically we have to set a budget, we're not allowed to go back to special, in Hanson's case, special town meeting in October. What I'm throwing out there is, no matter what Hanson and Whitman Selectmen come to, even if they came to an agreement tomorrow night, we can't do anything about it because DESI has to look at it first, and, you know, the chairman.
As far as an agreement.
As far as an agreement goes and stuff like that. We, and I'm only guessing, speculating, even if they came to an agreement, we wouldn't be able to do anything for this budget cycle on it. Well, my thought is, is going back to the state, whoever we have to go to, whether it's DESI or whoever, Jeff and John will throw it to, and George, I'll throw it to the three of you, going to them and getting so that if Whitman, how do I put it? Almost setting a, and it doesn't fix things, but almost setting a partial budget or doing something to, at least it gets us to the October timeline, so that the Whitman and Hanson Selectmen have time to figure out what they want to do, because everybody's absolutely right. I'll just speak for me. I'm not going to, in as much as I love the kids and everything else, you can't decimate a town on almost $2 million, because that's a lot, so. But, and I'm probably not phrasing right, but going to the state to say, look, we need an expedited timeframe as far as if Whitman and Hanson Selectmen come to some type of an agreement, whatever it might be, that we need you to sign off on it quicker than...
Normal statutory.
Yeah, normal statutory, whatever it would be, six months, three months, whatever it is, we need you actually to take a look at it. Because otherwise, you're looking at, yeah, you might be coming in and dealing with the budget and stuff like that. But also, too, being able to get the second bite of the apple, which I know Whitman typically doesn't do a fall town meeting or October town meeting, but Hanson does, to then be able to modify our budget further if we have to, because nobody likes the word override. And I hate putting it this way, but by the time all this is all said and done, by honest words, we're gonna be in April. And then 30 days later, we're gonna be at May town meeting. I don't think there's enough time for an override for May. Maybe I'm wrong, hopefully I'm wrong, but unfortunately, I think that's the reality is that's the way we're going, is we're looking at an override. Whereas if we're able to get something into place, and again, it's not ideal, and I'm just trying to give outside-the-box thinking, maybe it's totally wrong, and again, the state has, or whoever has to sign off on it, but at least it gives us enough time to then get to October town meeting, at least in Hanson, to if an override, for whatever the number is, whether it's a dollar or a million dollars, to be able to put something in place.
Christine Lynch did tell us that she, they could do a speedy review of that regional agreement if it was the most recent iteration, which I know there were some exit issues about towns exiting, and then there was some funky language about the methodology just wasn't as clear as it could be, but that would need to be changed anyway if there was some kind of, but she did say that they could expedite it. And to your question, to your point about not doing it in time for this May town meeting, we've both got it on our warrants, so...
But DESI, I think, has to sign off.
They do, however, what we could do is just ask them to expedite, and, you know, I mean, it's a Hail Mary, I don't know if it would happen, but, you know, ask them to expedite and put it on the town warrant that the budget approval is contingent upon the, you know, the regional agreement being approved at that same town meeting. It's not really the order it should be.
No, right, right. And again, these are, for a whole bunch of reasons, extraordinary times, and again, we're not the only regional district that's gone through this, because what you read in the papers or whatever, they've all been messy, so maybe actually get the state to try to clean it up and try to help the regional districts put this back together. And again, it's not ideal, and it's definitely not ideal for you guys to be stuck with, here's a portion of the budget, and then we're waiting for stuff to happen in October and things like that. I don't, I'm just throwing out ideas. And I know we don't get the two bites of the apple, but again, I don't know if we go back to the state with that.
Wait a minute, Fred.
Just trying to help.
We had Steve Hemming, and I forget the lady's name.
Maureen.
Maureen, and we talked about this expediting, and there's really no, like, expediting. They said they would sign, but it takes months.
The positive on the old, what we did, all that work that we did, the commissioners already signed off on the majority of that.
Yep.
So I think if there's something, we throw it out there and see what sticks, so to speak. I think what John is saying, the challenge of trying to vote a partial budget is going to be really difficult for us.
Oh, right.
Because not knowing, how do I plan for September?
All right, and I may be wording it wrong, but whether it's a contingent budget or something like that based on votes, or like Laura was talking about, whatever goes on with the regional agreement.
Fred?
Actually, what would happen on July 1st, we would have to notify the commissioner that we don't have a budget, okay? At that point, the state control is just, they set a budget, okay? Now, we can have input toward that as to how they set that. They'll probably listen to us if it's, especially if it's more than last year's budget, I would think.
That was not what Mars told us. They told us it was the 2020 budget, 1/12. Very little input.
That's what the regs say.
How did the Dayton Rehoboth get done? The commissioner sets it.
One at a time, please. So the individuals from Mars told us that, I know there's been some speculation about the Dayton Rehoboth situation, because I think in that case, Rehoboth was required to pay a little bit more than they had originally said they wanted to by DESI, and that was because they had not met their minimum funding requirements. It was not the same situation, so the state came in and said, you're not even, you're not even in the ballpark. You guys are really not even in good faith dealing with Dayton. We're going to make you pay what you should have paid. So it wasn't a windfall.
I should have spoken to a Rehoboth Selectman instead of the Dayton guy.
So Mars was very clear with us that it would be 1/12, even though the regulations do say that, that it would be 1/12 of the 2020.
Yeah.
And then if something couldn't be reached by December, that it would be fiscal control. And in that case, they would come back to the town.
Exactly, then they come in, so you do have a buffer period, so to speak. But that being said, whatever you do with an agreement, it is still subject to the voters. That's, you know, the scare button. It gets to the town floor in Whitman, and you got one guy that says, well, I don't want to do that, you know, makes a speech, and all of a sudden, it's, you know, 77 to 75, you know, what happens? It comes back to us.
Well, that's democracy, but that doesn't, I don't think it precludes you from doing what is the right thing to do for all concerned. You're going to always have people that disagree with things, you know, but you, we're all put in a position of leadership, and we need to do what we think is the right thing. And while I recognize that, you know, that there is a ways to go to get this district to where we want it, so like full-day, you know, kindergarten, maybe if that's important to you, restoring language, getting class sizes to where they... to you, restoring language, getting class sizes to where they should be, it can't all be accomplished in one year, and even a lot of it can't be accomplished in a year when you're making such a drastic shift in the towns and how they're funding it. So it just, it just really doesn't feel like a partnership when you're trying to do all of that in one year.
Please note that my motion was for what the district said was the required amount for level services, plus adding the four teachers to just the class size issue-
Which is how much more to Hanson, Fred.
Uh, 112,000, 100-
No, I'm sorry, Fred, entirely the additional amount that we would be assessed, what would that be?
Uh, the total assessment-
Our additional assessment.
I don't have that number, I don't know what your assessment was this year.
Yeah, it's right in the $2 million ballpark, Fred. So it's not inconsequential to us. If we did an override for that whole amount, which my board would not do, but if we were to do one, it would be in the vicinity of $500 per household. So you can see how that would be, go over like a lead balloon. It's just, that's, it's not going to fly.
Laura, it's 2.2 million, 354,258.54.
But where do we cut, and what do we do to the kids? I can understand that we try and cut as much as possible, and I would implore our administration, you know, let's look at what we have for retirements to see if we can cut any more dollars to anticipate those monies coming back. You know, I said something, you know, bring our own water, you know?
Well, E and D, and also circuit breaker money, I don't know how much you've got in that account, how much you're required to spend. I know you can keep it in there for a year, but I don't know if the amount on the table is what you're required to give up, or if you're giving up everything that you've got in there.
We can have up to 2%, no, I'm sorry, 5% of our budget.
So those are the types of things, I don't-
Yeah, we can have up to 5% of our budget in E and D, and generally, we like to, we try to keep our E and D between a million to a million five, somewhere in that range for unanticipated expenses.
So those are the types of things that I'm saying.
Our E and D sits at 600,000 right now. That could be two students for special ed.
Right.
And we're already over our special ed line as it is for the year, so we're probably going to be looking at that. We're probably going to be looking at E and D for, you know, the cleaning of the schools. I don't know that there's any E and D money there. You know, most certainly, we could try and take a look and see if there's anything, but it's the trickles, it's not the big dollar amounts.
Yeah, I don't think, Fred, honestly, I don't think that we're going to reach an agreement based on some huge dollar amount. I think it's going to be 100,000 here, Whitman gives a little here, Hanson fines 100,000. That's how I really see this as working out. I don't, I'm not asking for anybody to apply a tourniquet, you know, or like to sever a limb. I'm just asking for some modest cuts by all concerned, including ourselves, and then we can hopefully meet in the middle. But anyway, Bob, I think I'm offset, unless anybody had any other questions.
Okay, Chris?
Okay.
Thank you, Laura.
I don't know.
Chris, and then Mrs. Otina.
So I think-
She's been very patient.
So I agree with Don's comment, our job is to look certainly to the future of the students, but I think it's a long-term vision, not necessarily just for the immediate one year at a time, right? So I think as I look at that, that's where, again, consistent was what I said last time, I think we really need to look at trying to do what we can to get the two towns to come together and find a compromise. And maybe it's outside of the agreement this year, but I think they've had sufficient time, and I think they have sufficient time. It's, this is not, if we're talking about a 1.2 million dollar shift, okay, let's figure out a way to find, get halfway there this year. It's, I don't think we have to talk about, it's just, we don't have to overly complicate this.
No.
Right? And I think if we could do that, and I do think we have to take a hard look at the budget this year, I'm not sure we can support the required, it pains me to say that, but I can say that because I think what we really need to do going forward is work with both towns for the following year to do a full restore, which will require an override in both towns. And it's our job to make sure they understand exactly what they're going to be getting for those dollars spent, not, you know, two weeks before we pass a budget, say, "Hey, we need an override." It doesn't work, we know it doesn't work. It doesn't work, and it's not going to be, and this is my opinion, it's not going to help us get forward in moving the district forward, because one town's always going to be looking at, "How do I get that back? I spent that, I spent that, I spent that." So my ask, again, is, I think we need to look at this budget. I am not comfortable moving forward with the budget until I hear the towns have reached a compromise. And I also think, and I know I've batted this around with Jeff a little bit, I'm not sure why we're required to set this budget now. I don't, I have not found anything thus far, unless you've found something recently, that requires us to set a budget now.
So what I've got from our attorney is that we have to submit a budget 30 days prior to a town meeting, which we've marched 30th. That's what Andy Waugh has advised us. Michelle had a conversation with Frank, and Michelle, what was his drop dead, deadline?
A minute ago.
We've always sent it, he, his comment was, we've always, he's worked with the superintendent, and they've always got it, 45 days. According to Andy, you were supposed to set a budget or to send a town to town meeting 30 days prior to that town meeting, which would be, for us, I think, town meeting's marked May 4th, something like that. So we don't have to do this tonight. It has to be 30 days prior to. And just on that piece, the thing, the thing that, as we're sitting here, and cutting, cutting last year was hard, our job is to tell you, this is what we think we need, and then, it's, our job is hard, and then we give it to you and say, "Your job is harder now to make those decisions." I would just ask the committee, and I don't know from, and I hear Mr. Howard, I love the word compromise, I think compromise is great, but I don't know what either town can afford right now. Nobody's shared that information with us as a committee, as what a number that they can afford through the conversations that they've had, and I think they've had some really good conversations, and I think that's there. But for me to say, for you guys to say, "Okay, we're going to cut $500,000 tonight," I don't know what that means, because I don't know what that means for each community right now. I don't know those conversations, what the target number that they're looking for, the committee, to get there so that everybody feels, you know, the pain. I don't know what that means to the communities right now. So we gave forth a budget to you to restore, or to, as a level service piece, as I said, infrastructure-wise, we're going to start losing people if we don't give them physical support in the tech world here. If our infrastructure was state-of-the-art, I could say, "Yeah," but that's good. We had an assessment of our infrastructure, and it's failing, so that's going to be a cost later on. We talked about rebuilding our elementary curriculum. We have 28 kids in a class, and our teachers today don't have a reading program to assist those kids. So that's part of our required piece of it. And then we said the recommend to address class sizes, and I think that's up to the committee to say, "That's a priority." Superintendent Assistant Superintendent said, "That's a priority." Then you give me that number of what you want us to cut, if that's, if that, what say you, and we'll do that and move things around. I don't know what to cut right now. We used to have E and D, I don't know what to cut right now. You said $500,000, we go up, we put everything up on the board and see where we are. That would make some community members happy, because they don't have to open their wallets, it'd be some teachers upset because they'd have more kids in class, and it'd make some kids to say, like, "Mr. Cullody, I don't know if I want to send my kids to school anymore, because you're cutting services that should be there." So that's where I'm at right now. I think we gave you a fair budget that's level service, we threw in, we didn't give, and I think that's what we tried not to do, is give you everything. I know when I went to the Whitman Override Committee, it said, "Throw everything on the budget to see what you actually need in the next five years," and that's that recommend piece. We took one piece of that recommend to give to you, and now it's your position to then say, "This is the budget we're going to move forward with to the communities," or what the communities are looking at for what they can afford, or that, it's such a fluid number right now, and I'm using that word fluid quite a bit, but it's a fluid number, I don't know what that number is, what the communities can afford. I know that 1.2 million dollars to Hanson is a large amount of money, and I don't think they can just write that check right now. I understand that, but I don't know what is affordable outside of an override, and if it's 2020 budget going into July, that's $2 million worth of cuts that I'm doing this spring. So understand, you want class sizes of, that's $2 million in people, I don't have anything else to cut. I can take $600,000 out of E and D and scrape, but we're going to cut a lot of folks at $2 million bucks. That's level service. That was the budget that we had in 2020. And that's what happened in Dayton, and they laid people off right off the top. They laid people off, and they were able to work with the two towns to come up with something to bring those folks back, and then they got their budget in November, after a lot of conversations, and we are not Dayton Rehoboth. They were looking for a 1% increase to their budget last year to make ends meet. I'm looking for a level, we're a much larger community than they are.
We've, I'm going to let Mrs.-
No, that's fine, afterwards, outside the box again.
We've got until the 30th, but I'm not encouraging, we have to make decisions. We, this discussion that we've had, we've had the last three or four meetings, nothing's changed.
Thank you, Mrs.-
Name and address, please.
Absolutely, I forgot last week. I'm Kathleen Otina, I live at Washington Street, 344 Washington Street in Whitman. I'm actually speaking as a FinCom member tonight as opposed to a concerned grandparent. And I'm taking a slightly different approach to this discussion about the regional agreement and the 60-40 versus the statutory method, because as a relatively new resident of Whitman, I was wondering why in the world has it all of a sudden become crisis proportion, that the statutory method has been selected over the regional method? The regional method seemed to have worked for so many years, why is it all of a sudden a problem? So I have researched with Don Byers' help and with Rosemary Conley's help, learning how to do these budgets, the history of Chapter 70 funding, and I believe that the members have a copy of these numbers. Back in 2000, fiscal 2014, the Chapter 70 money was divided, 40% came from the Hanson students and 60% came from the Whitman students. So it didn't matter if you did statutory or regional agreement, 60-40 was the split. Then Chapter 70 money started to dwindle, and the way that they calculate the proportion, the amount of money that is given to each town, resulted in, over time, Whitman's, sorry, Whitman's Chapter 70 money is still around $13 million, and Hanson has gone from $10 million to $7 million, a $3 million drop. This is not an accusation, it's just a statement of fact. And hold harmless has presented, has allowed the region to stay with its head just barely above water. And so the 60-40 agreement method worked because the Chapter 70 money tracked with the student population. If you look at fiscal '21, the Chapter 70 money is now 65 Whitman and 35 Hanson, that's a 10% swing. So clearly, the regional agreement needs to be reopened and renegotiated, but it can't happen overnight. And so I don't want this to appear that Whitman just decided, "Hey, we're in trouble, so we're going to throw the statutory method as a means to resolve Whitman's problems." It was, whoa, the Chapter 70 money is not tracking with the students. So I appreciate everyone's level of stress, but there is a reason for this problem all of a sudden coming to crisis proportions. When it was, if it were 41-59, it wouldn't be a big deal. If it were 62-38, it wouldn't be a big deal. But it's 10% difference, a 10% swing. So that's one piece of information. The other thing that I would like to suggest is, the schools are not an individual entity separate from the towns. We're talking about an override for the schools, I don't agree with that approach. I'm on the FinCom, we look at all of the town departments. The school budget is part of the municipal budget, and when the FinComs meet to discuss what, how the towns should be spending their money, the schools should not be set off alone by itself as, "These guys are going to cost us another $1 million, another $2 million." It should be looked at as, what does the town need to pay to provide the services that all citizens of the town, even the ones who can't vote, need for their services? So I think there's a real danger, I moved here just as the 2016 override failed, after the, you know, the energies and the emotion of the Support Our Schools group was exhausted, and I think that that energy has to be reinvigorated, and remember that the students do rely on us adults to advocate for them, and I'm not accusing anyone of not advocating, I know that you're in a very tough position. But let the school budget be supported to the level that you think it should be, and then have the FinCom in both towns work on, what does it cost to run Whitman? What does it cost to run Hanson? And the schools are part of that municipality, it is not a separate entity. Thank you all for your patience.
Okay, I have a motion on 20, Mr. Boyce?
Yeah, I know you want to move on this, I just want to ask, because I do agree with everything that everyone has said, but I'm going to say it, we need to, as a committee and people, reconsider at our next meeting, the statutory agreement that we entered into. And I know I'm going to have a lot of hate mail or whatever, and I don't care, first thing first, we need to work, once again, with Hanson, I've heard Ms. Emmett, and I always appreciate her words. We're going to do this in steps, folks. It's been said, we're not all, we're hearing it, but we're, we're going to do this in steps, and that's what will help us this year. So what if, if Whitman's, you know, we changed it to a 50-50 for this year? Let's get by with something a little bit more normal. You all have it written in front of you, and you can see, you may not have this current year's number, but you know exactly what we're looking at.
Unfortunately, Mr. Boyce, to reconsider what we had already voted, it has to be done at the next meeting.
Yes, and then we're abstained.
And it has to be done by one of the members who voted for it, not against it, to be reconsidered. That would have had to been done a few meetings ago, because we already looked into that. I'm not sure there's any way to do exactly what you're saying, because I'm not an attorney, and I might think that would be something for Mr. Waugh, Jeff?
Yeah.
To discuss.
So, so I asked Andy Waugh, our counsel, that question. On the vote question, I said, can we reconsider whether the vote on methodology can be reconsidered? Roberts Rules of Order, Rule 27 states that, in order, is in order any time, even when another member has the floor, or while the assembly is voting on the motion to adjourn, during the day on which the motion has been acted upon, or the next succeeding meeting, to move to reconsider the vote and have such a motion entered into the record, but it cannot be considered while another question is before the assembly. If the vote is not considered on the day it was taken and no meeting was held the next day, then it cannot be reconsidered at the next meeting. The proper course is to renew the motion if it failed, or rescinded if it had been adopted. The rule further provides the motion for reconsideration must be made by a member who voted for the prevailing side. Based upon the foregoing rule, does not appear that the committee can reconsider the earlier motion on methodology, should, or, and should instead renew or make a new motion. So.
Did you get that, Mr. Boyce?
Yep.
Okay. Fred, then Robbie?
Yeah, well, what I'd like to ask our superintendent-
Yes.
Is the required budget, other than people, does it contain curriculum?
Yes.
And that's curriculum that we're doing without this year?
Yes, since 2001.
Since 2001. If we did without that curriculum for one more year, is it something we can get by without? In other words, I'm just trying to say, is there any way we can get out of pencil sharpeners?
I might not cut it. That wouldn't be an area that I would cut. It's a necessity for our kids. We're just talking about kids now, again, putting off another year of reading. We've done it since 2001, that's not what you hired me to do. So you just give me a number, and I'll come up with a cut, but I'm not going to, I have to look at where we are, and it might be people, it might be there, but I have to take it with my team and say, "This is what the towns can afford, where do we cut?" And curriculum might not be there, it might be something that we feel is necessary for our kids to move forward.
What about our school committee line item? Can we break that out and look at the historical data?
Sure. I mean, I think the total amount in school committee is 20 grand, so.
Well, it's a start. Got to start somewhere, you know, water.
Again, you guys tell me where to cut, and I'll cut the budget. That's what, that's what I need from you folks, just give me a number, and then we'll go from there. I'll bring it to the team, and we'll look at it all. And if the committee says, "Hey, to cut our lines, because that's your line," I'll cut your line, too. But that's, I mean, in simple terms, you folks have put me in a position to do what's best for kids, and I'll continue to fight for that piece of it, and I know the budget. Hey, we lived here, he's been here longer than I have, this is the same, it's Groundhog Day again, we're going to start cutting it.
I mean, you know, usually I get in trouble every time at this year, but it's the 17th spring that we do the same thing. Every year is blood from a stone, every year is just tread water, every single year. And so now I've moved from that seat to this seat, and it's still the same. I completely, no, no, I'm talking about, excuse me. I completely, no, I'm talking, excuse me. So I completely scripted this meeting. Because I know everybody's well-intentioned. But when we got hired, Jeff told you, December before last, he said, we're gonna give you a budget for what we think we need, and we're not gonna be fluffed. Because previous to that, we sort of, the district sort of made fake budgets, knowing we were gonna cut them. Principals did it, we did it, and they always get cut. The first thing we did two Decembers ago, when we presented the first time, was that we said, we're gonna give you the budget that we think we need, and it's gonna be legit. So we then cut 1.9 million. We will definitely do whatever we're told. But I think you owe it to us, if we're the ones who have to go to everyone, to say, give us the number that we'll cut, and we'll deal with it. We'll deal with it, and we'll tell you what they are. But this is Groundhog Day.
Okay, before I go to Robbie, and then Dawn, and then Fred, and, does anybody have any new information? Because we've had five meetings, and we're kicking the same exact information around, exactly the same. So we're not getting anywhere.
I got procedural question.
Pardon me?
I got procedural, and I'm gonna throw, and Laura, I'm gonna throw it to you, just so you can bring it back to the town administrator, and anybody from what, and bring it back to the town administrator. Yeah, no, but hypothetically, if we were to make, how do I put it? So our snow and ice that pays, and I'll throw it to FinCom too, because I don't even know if this can even be worked out, but somehow taking our snow and ice stuff and adding it in with the towns. So the town's still gonna pay for it, but yet it comes out of, I'll call it the town's snow and ice account versus sitting in the school budget one. And what I'm, like, what's going through my head is, okay, if we were to decimate Indy, I'm not necessarily proposing that, but if we took 600,000 out of it, which then pays for the special ed kids, so if we had somebody from Hanson move in, well, now the town of Hanson gets that bill, and it's a catch 22, because you could make out or not make out in, but now the town of Hanson gets that bill for that one student, because we don't have the money for it. Then same thing with, like, this year here, we're looking at a, however much it is to clean the school for next weekend, well, the town of Whitman now gets that bill. And again, these would have to be, it'd have to be a, I'm gonna call it a sidebar agreement, a legal agreement that's set up with the town of Whitman and the town of Hanson, because at least then, I'm just throwing out the number, you're pulling 600,000 off, whatever, but the town of Hanson's, you're responsible for this period. Town of Whitman, you are responsible for this period. I'm throwing it out there, I'm not looking for an answer tonight, but I'm trying to think outside the box, because I, I know, I know exactly what you're saying. You can, like I've told everybody, you can script what's gonna go on. And like I've said, since December, you can script what's gonna go on from now, I think, till July. And I'm just, I'm trying to use outside the box thinking. I don't see how the state or anybody can say that the town of Hanson cannot have a sidebar agreement with the school committee that, or the school district, here's what we'll now take ownership of. And same thing with the town of Whitman, here's what we'll take ownership of. Whitman DPW, they've done a ton of work on sidewalks and things like that, you know, same thing, I know Hanson's done it with the highway department, the water department, things like, and again, maybe it only saves 50, 150 grand, but that brings it down, and again, catch 22 for the town, if they've got a, maybe they have to pay for it, maybe they don't. It was a nice, nice snow season thus far, although now we're gonna have a cleaning bill. But I'm just trying to think outside the box, I'm just spitballing.
I see one line item we can add revenue to, and it's the athletic line item. It's $400,000. I would never advocate to cut athletics, but there's a user fee. So I'm not advocating to raise the user fee, but that's a revenue stream. There are other towns that pay more than 250,000. That's it. Next question, procedural question. I have a copy of the, just preparing the budget, from Desi, says 45 days, our school committee must adopt, is that different?
We were always at 45 days, and we called Andy Waugh, because that was my concern too. And he said, the 30th of March is adequate.
Okay, so it's changed from this.
I have no idea, he's an attorney.
I'm our counsel, and that was my conversation with.
And I wouldn't wanna.
I thought 45, it was always 45 days that I thought, but the attorney says no.
Can we enter that into the record?
I just don't wanna be in comments.
No, but I.
I don't wanna.
I always thought it was 45 days, and I knew I'd seen it somewhere.
Yeah, it's 45 days.
Like to move to vote?
I just wanna bring up one quick thing, or two quick things.
Quickly, Fred.
Okay, first of all, can the Corona cleaning be considered a capital item slash repair to the towns? I mean, it's over $5,000, and it's an unanticipated expense.
Sure, but if I were to give that, and I bill it to the towns, and they say we're not gonna fund it, I'm stuck.
Well, we'd have to get the selectmen, etc., you know, like we do if a water heater blows.
We could, we could.
You know, or something like that, and then have it go through a town meeting. So that was one thought that I had. The other thing, George, I'd just like to say, it's Groundhog Day, but also, three years ago, we did try a student success override. So it hasn't been for lack of trying on this committee, you know, to garner extra funds.
I'm just telling you where I've been the last 17 springs. I'm not throwing any stones, I'm telling you, I've been as a taxpayer and a person who works for the school department for the last 17 springs, that's all I'm saying. I like all you people, you're all nice people, I'm not angry with anybody, I'm just telling you.
Okay, I've got a motion to move to the vote, she's been very patient. Do you have anything different, or no?
Something I want people to consider is, this mentality to get a lower amount could actually end up being more expensive. And we saw that when we saw the override didn't pass, we saw a big influx of out-of-district students. And I think we spoke to school class sizes. I believe the Boston Teachers Union says 22 for elementary, 26 for middle school, and 28 for. Yeah, and after that, and they use this because after that, teachers aren't as effective. And if you're doing that, you're gonna, you're not going to be able to teach well, you're going to end up creating more kids that you aren't teaching well, and create out-of-district spending. So what we're being penny wise, we might be being pound foolish. And we saw that before. So be conscious of that, you know, this one-time fix may have a long time funding, better funding for Hanson as well. Additionally, Whitman citizens have, if you all took Charting the Course, under Charting, under Chapter 71, you all took Charting the Course. Chapter 70 was part of Charting the Course, I've spoken to Desi, and in Chapter 70, it talks about what Chapter 70 money is. It is allocated per town, it is a resource of Whitman, a resource of Hanson. So when I say this, I'm saying, Whitman, okay, Whitman.
No, we're done, we're not, we're not interested, we're not gonna get into that.
Well, Whitman citizens paid more.
We're talking about budget.
This is budget, it was said by Laura Kimmitt. It was said by Laura Kimmitt, an amount was paid for house.
We've heard this before, so.
An amount was paid by Whitman.
Motion to move to the vote.
Thank you. I have a motion on 208,528,937 as the assessment, and I had a second. Is that correct? Mr. Small, I think you made it.
I made it.
Mr. Colletti, I think you seconded.
Yes.
Is that correct, Michelle? 28,528,937, period. Is that correct? Is that correct? Okay. All those in favor?
Are we roll calling?
Yeah, we're gonna roll call.
Oh yeah, we've gotta do this, I'm sorry, I keep forgetting, Mr. Boyce is here. You still here, Mr. Boyce?
Yes, I am.
Okay, wanna do a roll call? No.
No, no.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that doesn't carry. Um, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 4.
Help us count.
Five.
It's 5, 4.
5, 4, you're just counting, Michelle. Okay, do we want to continue with motions, or would you like to, we're gonna be pushing this to the 30th, and our next meeting is the 26th.
What if it's not the 30th? I mean, I understand counsel says the 30th, but we also have an advice from Desi that says it's 15 days shorter than that.
I couldn't agree with you more.
Dawn, what are you reading? Do you mind sharing?
I don't know.
Is it current, Michelle?
Can you find online? Right now?
I was looking at the regs.
What's 45 days, what's the drop date data in 45 days?
Friday.
All we're doing, we've had five meetings with the same.
Can we meet Monday night?
Next Monday.
Does that give us 45 days?
Wednesday does also.
You can't, because it's not 48 hours, 40.
Wednesday does.
You need two business days.
So can I read what Andy sent me? So I asked the counsel this. Question three was days. MGL, Chapter 71, Section 16B states that, in relevant part, that the amounts so portioned for each municipality should be certified by the regional school district treasurer to the treasurers of the several municipalities within 30 days from the date on which the annual budget is adopted by two-thirds vote of the regional school committee, but no later than April 30th. I suppose the committee could vote the budget sometime in April, but have the treasurer immediately certify it to the towns before April 30th. With 30 days notice, the latest that the committee could vote a budget would be March 31st, 2020.
That's his legal answer.
That's what he gave me.
Okay, I think I see a differences of opinion, but.
Well, this is also the same law firm that came to represent us, that gave us incorrect information about statutory way back when, that their attorney didn't know, so.
31 Forest Street, could I get a clarification on the difference between reconsidering a motion and rescinding a motion? The motion to rescind versus the motion to reconsider.
So Michelle will read Roberts Rules right now.
Says the motion, the rescind, this motion is used to cancel something that the voting body did at a previous meeting. Life changes, we change our minds, circumstance changes, and this is the motion that allows you to respond to that change. A member should not be able to wait just until the right number of people who voted in favor of it absent, and then move to rescind. Okay, what can't be rescinded? Here are some things that you cannot rescind. A vote after something has been done as a result of that vote, and it is too late to undo it. If, for example, a motion was made at a March meeting to buy something for the next three monthly meetings, and you are at the April meeting, and that has not been done, it is not possible to undo the buying of said thing for the April meeting. An action in the nature of a contract, once the party in the contract has been informed. If, for example, a contract is signed or verbally committed to, a resignation has been acted upon, an election tour, an expulsion from membership, or a motion that could still be reconsidered.
I think I get that. The question is more, to reconsider is just in the same meeting with a simple majority, but to rescind can be at future meetings, but I think it has to be two-thirds, is that right? Something like that? Start copy.
So for the motion to rescind, any two calling votes are needed. You need a two-thirds vote, you need a majority vote, if the previous notice is given, and a majority of the entire membership.
So you can, you can rescind a vote at future meetings, as long as intent was given, and if intent was given, it was a majority, and without it, it's two-thirds. So you can rescind a vote, you couldn't reconsider a vote.
Well, she's looking, Mr. O'Brien, you had your hand up?
Yep, so I'm not gonna throw it out in a motion yet, but just hear me out for a minute. We have to give George and Jeff some direction, because otherwise they're just spinning their wheels. What my thought is, and we did this, we did this last year in Hanson, I'm not sure if we did it in Whitman, but my proposal would be is, one member from, a member from Whitman and a member from Hanson of the school committee, George and Jeff, sit down with Frank and John in the next, whatever it is, five days, or seven days or whatever, and sit down and find out what they can do. Because they're saying, we're here and they can't do this number, okay, where are they at? So they, so the, I'll call it the subcommittee can come back to us and say, here's where they're at. And at least give George and Jeff some idea, because I could throw it there, show us what a million dollar cut looks like, when realistically, they might only be looking at 400,000, or they might be looking at 1.8 million a cut. So. Because we need to have an idea as to what they're looking at, so. And again, I'm just spitballing, so.
Michelle, you getting any resolve to that?
It says what can't be.
Meantime?
It says, it says, an action in the nature of a contract, once the other party in the contract has been informed. If, for example, a contract is signed or verbally committed to, we send the vote to the towns, that the statutory method is.
We already sent it to them, it said we approved.
Not clear?
So we cannot change it. We cannot rescind it.
I don't think we can rescind it. We can check again, I mean.
Yeah, that's, can we just ask legal counsel?
I will do it again.
So it says we can't do it?
So the question would be, what are the grounds to set the assessment after the initial assessment was set? That, I think, is the question.
Okay, so, write that down, so I can exactly send that.
Right, if we set the assessment, whatever date it was, are, is there any opportunity?
You set the assessment methodology.
Methodology, okay.
Correct, methodology.
Yes. So what are the grounds to rescind the assessment?
No, what are the, so are there grounds, once the assessment methodology was set, for the school committee to set it, set a different methodology? Because then we can figure out whether it's rescind, reconsider.
I'll put that out there to any attorney available tomorrow, after 8:30.
What would that change? I don't know. Let's say the vote got rescinded, okay, so let's say, you know, we end up voting a budget based upon the old method, now it goes to town hall floor in Whitman, and you end up having the Whitman voters reject it, which would probably happen. You know, how would it, it comes back to us, we send it back, now we end up supertown meeting statutory. You know, that's the way I see any way, any road playing out, myself.
Chris George, for Shelley Lane, Whitman. I guess let me take this in two steps, assessment method first. If you actually look at the Desi memo, you don't need a vote to use the statutory method. You need a vote to use anything but the statutory method. So the vote that was taken, at least in my opinion, was a vote that was to let the town knows, let the towns know the intention of the school committee. If the two towns come back with a different budget using a different method, the school committee can accept that budget. You'll then be voting on an assessment method that's different than statutory. That would be my take on it, based on all the different memos and information that I've read from Desi. I think that's one. Kind of getting to the second piece of this, which is setting a budget. So last night, I was appointed by the Whitman selectmen to be the Whitman representative, citizen representative on the regional agreement committee. There's been things put out there on social media. I wasn't put on that committee because I don't want to compromise. I think I was put on that committee because I understand this formula. I was put on that committee because I have a fairly level head, and I think I was put on that committee because I understand that we're close to a compromise, and I'm hoping we can push that through. What I would say, though, is, there can't be a compromise without a number that we're working towards. This committee can always accept a budget voted by the two towns that's different than what you asked for today. So I would encourage you to support the budget that Jeff and George are asking for, I would encourage you to put that out there, let us go back and tweak it, let us figure out what that compromise is, let that committee that you're putting together do what it's supposed to do, and let us bring that to the towns. Short of that, I can't sit down and talk about a compromise without knowing what those numbers are. I can't, I can't cast a vote on something where I don't know what it is. If we could do that, then I think Randy and Laura would be up here telling you what it is. But they need a number, they need a number to come up with a final decision, and both towns really need to take that back and look at it and see what they can do. And then, as Fred said, it's gonna be subject to a vote anyway. So fallback here is, we're either at supertown meeting, or we're at a 1/12 budget, right? Depending on what the committee decides to do. So either way, I think you're just kicking the can down the road if you don't come up with a number tonight. You're not gonna let us start that work early. You're not going to let us start that work early if we kick this further down the road. I mean, we all know what the timeline is. We all know we need DESI to participate. The sooner we can get this going, I'm ready, I think others are as well, the sooner we can get this going, you know, the faster we're going to get there and the better result we're going to have.
Chris?
Yeah, so I keep hearing the same thing pretty much every meeting, right? It continues to fall on the school committee to provide the information necessary to achieve a compromise, and I couldn't disagree more. I hear the same thing, we have to set the assessment methodology so that we can talk. We have to give a rough idea so we can talk. Everyone knows where it stands. To me, there's a very simple compromise. Here's a one-point-two-million-dollar swing. Here's a way to figure out a halfway split. Have the towns come in and say they've agreed to something, and we can certainly set a budget from that point forward.
But Chris, it's not a one-point-two-million dollars, it's two-million-three-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand.
So the change in the assessment methodology was roughly a one-point-two-million-dollar swing to the town of Hanson for this year.
Yeah. But that's what I'm saying.
In one year, and the state sat there and immediately told us, compromise, compromise, compromise. So that's my position, I don't see it changing.
Dan?
I'd like to make a motion to have one member from each town and the superintendent, assistant superintendent, meet with the town administrators to see what stones have left in them, so we can report back to this committee to make that decision, because hopefully that gives our superintendent and his crew some time to look at the budget. Come back and then set that at our next meeting, and I'd like to see that next meeting be Tuesday or Wednesday next week. We can't keep pushing this down.
I hundred percent agree with it for the simple reason that we're four or five meetings into it, and it's.
Well, it's like Chris was just saying, we're hearing they need this, this. Well, we don't hear those meetings, so we don't know where they are. We'll sit down with the town administrator with the superintendent, come back, and then we should know what we have. It's a black hole from us, it's a black hole from their side, it's time we get in there and see it on the sidebar.
Somebody want a second? I have a sec, two seconds, Robbie. Okay. Any further discussion on that motion? Dawn?
I disagree with that. We have an open meeting right now. Fincom can come in. People can come in and talk.
But they haven't, and that's up to us. We got to find what the numbers are.
I disagree with.
Well, let's take the vote.
All right. I just have a question. So basically, then, we're going to go in and everybody's going to be open, and then real, and then we're supposed to believe exactly what they say, and then we come back and we make the decision from there.
We make the decision from there, and then we don't have to hear from them saying we're looking for numbers. We're going to get the numbers from them, bring it back so we can set a budget, and we got to remember, we just set a budget here, it can only go down, we can't go back up, so we have to make sure we're doing what, hopefully what Jeff and George are looking for. But just going back and forth, you know, they're looking for this, we're looking for that, it's got to go to bed, and we have to get this over with.
Ally?
This is making me nuts. I feel like we are really not getting anywhere, and it's the same flipping thing year after year. Did we not say last week, we can't set a budget, but they know what the numbers are? But now we're hearing this week, we need to know what the numbers are. Well, we talked about what the numbers were last week and what we needed. I don't understand why we're not getting anywhere. I also am sick and tired of hearing that the school needs to cut this and cut that. I'd like to see, and I know this is not going to be a popular statement, but I'd rather see something else get cut. I'm sick and tired of seeing the towns losing, I'm sorry, the schools losing everything. It's ridiculous. And I know we can't really, you know, we can't lose people on the fire realistically or police realistically, but something else needs to, there needs to be a compromise somewhere else instead of the schools taking the hit year after year because the towns can't afford this, they can't afford that. When is enough enough? We need to stand up for what is right for our kids, what is right for their education, and set this budget at what they need, and not go, oh, you know, well, I mean, every year, we're capitulating to the towns as to what they can afford. Well, you know what? I can respect that, but that's not really our job to go, oh, I'm sorry, well, what can you afford? Let me see what we can do. Let us cut more teachers or not bring in curriculum. That's not what we're here for.
Okay, Justin, go ahead, you're new.
Just going to keep going, yeah. Justin Evans, Whitman Board of Selectmen. This is not what I came up to talk about, but just to respond to Ally. Last year, Whitman eliminated the contract leading position at the equivalent of one full-time staff position. We failed to fill police department shifts at the equivalent of about one full-time position, and we reneged on a contract to make the deputy fire chief and administrative deputy, which is another full-time position we didn't fill. So I understand that the schools cut nineteen positions, they're about eighty percent of the staff of the community, and Whitman also cut positions from the same stance. That's been said a lot lately, and I just needed to correct that.
I know that, but when you look at two and a half to nineteen, come on.
You make up eighty percent of the staff. You'll suffer eighty percent.
Because we're educating the children from both towns.
Yeah.
Okay, but this isn't helping us.
Yeah, this isn't helping. I came up to say that, you know, four weeks ago, when you started saying this, the town said we were ready for a budget. Two weeks ago, Laura came up here and said we were ready for a budget, we're close to a compromise. You deliberated for another hour, and then Randy got up and said, again, we're ready for a budget, so nothing's changed, we're ready for a budget.
I have a motion in a second. Go ahead, Sean. Is it new?
Mr. His?
Well, I think it's just to the point. The point is you need an agreement before you set a budget. I think you should sit down and agree to terms before you set a budget. That is the point. You shouldn't say, let's set a budget, then we'll come to terms, but the order is what's off or where the disagreement is. I agree with Mr. Hoplin.
Thank you. Fred and Mike, and then we're going to move on some of these.
For the committee's edification, I just sent an email to Michelle, looking up on the masslegislature.gov, the regulations, and they're spelled out exactly as our attorney sent it to us, thirty days.
Okay.
You know, so I understand it's not the DESI site, this is sixteen B, I think it is. Section sixteen B of Chapter seventy-one.
Thank you, Fred. Mike?
Speaking from Hanson, if we did have an A agreement tonight, I would, not speaking for these other two, but we'd be able to easily vote a budget. But we need an agreement. If there was an agreement, we knew what this agreement was, it wasn't in the doc, we easily could, I could easily vote this. That wouldn't be a problem. So I think we need, I don't think it's just us that's holding this up. We're in the dark.
That's what we got to forget. Well, I have a motion on forming a committee.
But you know something with that committee? They don't even get the number. Find out, even if it's confined just to those people, find out an idea as to what this agreement is between Whitman and Hanson. We're in the dark.
That's the whole thing. Yes, Fred?
And I would like to see that committee take a look and have a very frank discussion. And I understand you say you just want a number, and we'll get to it and tell you what, you know, these are the casualties. Like to be a little bit more involved in that, maybe it's not our place, but the budget is our place, and say, well, jeez, can we do without this? Can we do without that? You know?
Sure.
Can we put a squelch on travel? You know, can we do, you know, try and become imaginative as different ways that we can save some dough? You know, and it may not be much, but it may end up being something, it might matter to people.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, and it's been a lot of information, but a lot of it's redundant information that we're seeing tonight. I don't know if that's going to get us anywhere, Dan, but I mean, there is a motion in a second to create a committee. Can you, Michelle, can you run that by me again?
One, I think you said Fincom member from each town, superintendent, assistant superintendent, meet with the town administrators, and then report back to the committee.
That's the motion?
No, it was just two members from here, one from each town, superintendent and assistant superintendent, and the town administrators.
Oh, two members from us?
Yes.
One from Whitman, one from Hanson.
Because I want to hear, you know, it's all this we're doing behind conversations, they're looking for numbers, we don't know what to give them for numbers, we don't know where they are. We get together, we know where they are, we can go back and tell the committee, and we just vote that budget in, that's it.
Well, yeah, but shouldn't it be, shouldn't the selectmen that are talking to each other, shouldn't the committee consist of at least one of those as well, from each town? I mean, granted, now you're talking a crazy big committee to try and sit there and figure out what you need to do with a budget, you know, but at the same time, how?
Just want to find out what they're doing.
I don't know. I think the intentions are good, but.
Well, we can vote on it, but I'd rather, I'm not suggesting the committee do anything. Jeff and George have said come up with a number.
Yep.
And we'll tell you how, you just sort of mentioned it, we'll tell you how we're going to get there and what the casualties are going to be. We're not getting anywhere, forming more committees to, that they already more or less have going on. You know, there's a couple people from the board, is Laura still here?
Yep. She's in one of the company.
Oh, you're way down there, okay. I couldn't see you. And I keep hearing that you guys are close, you're close. I mean, to form another committee, if you're close.
Well, I did suggest the formation of another committee.
No, no, I understand.
I think it's death by a thousand committees sometimes, you know, and, but, you know, but maybe what I'm hearing is that we should, what we're trying, what we'd like to do, and what we've talked about is, we really aren't meeting anymore, like, just amongst ourselves, because we want to make sure that we're being as transparent as possible. But maybe what we can do is have you guys be part, like, do we need to form a formal committee on this? I mean, can't we just get together and agree that we're going to get together, and we can film it and open, you know, session if people want to, you know? The main thing is, you know, it's fine to have an open session and everything, but we need to get down to brass tacks and just really speak plainly with one another, like, this is what we can afford, what can you do? No, really, one more time with feeling, what can you do? And then get to, you know, so I think probably it would be helpful for George and Jeff to be part of that, and if you guys want to have, like, I don't want to turn it into like a three-ring circus, but, you know.
We just want to know, because you guys are meeting, we don't know what's in those little discussions.
Well, we have, we've stopped meeting because frankly, people were like, well, what are they meeting about? You know, is there something weird and secretive going on? There was nothing weird and secretive going on. We were really trying to be.
With feelers out there.
Yeah, really, just like, okay, where are you guys at? And quite honestly, sometimes there are conversations that can happen more frankly and more efficiently when it's mono-a-mono, you know, face-to-face, and it's not cameras and fifty million other people going around, and you've got a better shot at negotiations, and anybody that's done negotiations knows that to be the truth. So we sort of said, okay, we want to be responsive, if people are getting all freaky about us meeting, we'll kind of back off of that. That said, I think we could probably modify and add whomever it is that you would like to have added to the mix, and I'm pretty sure, Justin, where are you? I mean, I think you guys would probably be open to just kind of continuing, yeah, yeah, continuing the conversation.
I withdraw.
Laura, I'm going to put you on the spot a little bit, and this is kind of awkward. What would you like to see us cut? Would you like to see us cut five-hundred thousand? Would you like to see us use E and D? And I hate putting you on the spot. What would you like?
I'm frankly, Bob. Frankly, I would like to see, I already told you earlier, I'd like to see what you're doing for E and D, I'd like to see what you're doing for circuit breaker, I'd like to see what the efficiencies are that you've got this year over last year. And I recognize, you know, and so it's a multi-part thing, right? We're just talking about this year right now? It is not our intention to keep the district on a starvation diet for the rest of their lives. Now, there is a natural tension, right? And I think it needs to be there, where the towns ask questions, because, you know, it's a huge part of our budget, and we need to have some of that accountability and, you know, and a little bit of that natural, like, checks and balances, so that we're asking some of those questions. Not that you guys aren't, but we're looking through a different lens. I've got a lot of competing needs that we have to balance. You guys are advocating for the kids, I get it. And I don't begrudge you, I think you're all doing a great job, and I appreciate the service you're doing. So I think to answer your question, I just want to know that you can say honestly that you've dug in to all of those little, and we know, no matter how transparent you are, but there's like E and D, the circuit breaker money, there's maybe line items that you didn't spend money on. I've heard discussions here tonight and at other times about things that have come under budget from what you had projected, that all of that money is at least being taken a look at, and then, you know, and then that's really all I would really ask, and then we're doing the same, and I assume that Whitman is. We're really looking for all of those items that, you know, maybe articles that we funded at past town meetings where we didn't spend the entire amount that we thought we would, really kind of going through and trying to glean that amount of, you know, that money out of there. I don't want to call it hidden money, because it's not hidden, it's very transparent, it's in the books, it's accounted for, but it's, you know, maybe like those little accounting things that we've got to clarify, close out some accounts, that type of stuff, Bob, that's what I'm looking for. I don't know if that answers your question, but, and I can't give you a dollar amount because I don't know what you've got in those types of accounts, I don't have any idea.
Okay. Sean, we went line by line last week.
Correct.
Correct. Are there any, like, did we over-budget anything, I think is my question.
I suspect if we looked at it, we might be able to find some items where today we think we over-budgeted. But then again, this conversation two years ago would have said that, and it turned out that you under-budgeted transportation and spent, and spent itself. At the end of the year, if we have any surplus, it goes back to E and D to be spent the next year. We've talked about E and D, and what is it? Our E and D, which is moral equivalent of free cash for a community, is at six-hundred-and-five-thousand dollars, that's on a budget of fifty-five million dollars. That's really not a lot of money, and it's not much of a backup in the event of another... Well, if we're talking about perhaps needing money to clean buildings, that's.
Yeah, you could spend a hundred thousand.
That's where we go, there's not much there. We talked about circuit breaker. We started this year with six-hundred-and-nineteen dollars in the circuit breaker account that was left over from previous years. Not a lot of money.
How much?
Six-hundred-and-nineteen dollars.
Six-hundred-and-nineteen?
Six-hundred-and-nineteen dollars. That was the surplus left over from the previous year. We do not have, to the best of my knowledge, any accounts that are the equivalent of articles that towns have. I appreciate that capital articles in towns sometimes are not spent. We have, we run on a budget without separate articles, so we don't have those to look at.
Meaning, like, just to give an example, so people know, like, are you saying, like, if a town put three-hundred thousand aside to build a playground and hadn't built it in the next year?
Hasn't built it in the next year, that sits there as that money until either it reverts back to the town when they believe that there's no longer a purpose for it to be used, or it is spent, one or the other. We run, but when the town has an operating budget for salaries and expenses, at the end of the year, what isn't spent goes into free cash. We operate on budgets. At the end of the year, that money goes back into E and D, if there's a surplus.
There is no free cash.
Well.
It goes into E and D.
E and D is a regional school's district.
I understand.
Version of free cash.
I'm just asking it so anybody watching might have a general idea of, we don't have, like, free cash, and the towns don't have, it's kind of a bad term, because we get the town meeting, and a lot of people think free cash, when they talk about free cash, is exactly free cash, and it's not.
To be, I guess to be more accurate, it's undesigned funds balance.
Exactly.
It's undesigned funds balance in the town, and it's undesigned funds balance in a school.
Okay. Fred?
I'm going to take a shot at a couple of things here, and hopefully we can be indulged. School committee travel.[1738.71] Uh, school committee travel, I'm assuming that's for hotel and other accommodations, you know, for conferences?
You going, like, back over the line?
I'm going back to the line by line, page four or seven, thank you, from last time.
For some reason, last year was taking mass association of school committees, your-
Last year.
Uh, your membership was taken out of there, and then I, I brought in Roger Hatch to talk about assessment stuff.
Roger?
Roger Hatch from DESI.
I'm trying to remember.
You didn't see him, I saw him about the, the assessment methodology and statutory, he used to work for DESI, so he consulted for $240.
Okay.
But that's what travel is for, I assume that's also for hotels, if you decide to travel.
Because we have school committee other expense, which is $9,000.
Yep.
What did we spend out of that? We spent, last year, $7,000 out of that, what did we, where did that money go?
So, in FY19, uh, I've got money coming out of there, for other expenses, it was MASC as well, and then I have, uh, transportation and annual dues.
So, annual dues for both?
So, I have, uh, $2,700 at one expense, and then $6,300 at another set, expense for MASC.
Okay, is that what MASC costs us?
Yes, I believe the $6,300 is your annual membership to MASC, the twenty, the $2,000 and-
Is that Mars, perhaps?
$2,700 was the, was the cost of the annual meeting down at the Cape.
Down at the Cape.
Down at the Cape. That doesn't include lodging, but it would include the, um, registration for the conference-
Okay.
For the school committee members, as well as meals.
Okay.
If they, if they took them there.
All right, so we can get rid of that 2,700 theoretically, uh, if the, obviously the committee is willing, uh, I mean, can we, so you've got- Just looking here.
It's a state of the conference.
Fred?
Yeah?
I, I would also like to see that we get rid of, um, any school committee members being reimbursed for hotels, when it's a local conference, that really, that's unnecessary.
Let me just get rid of it for this year.
Yeah. Well, get what?
Get rid of hotels for this year, period.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
I'll cut all your line items, easy.
Which line was it?
Well, you've got it split up in-
All school committee stuff, I'll just cut.
So, it's all one, you can't-
Well, we still need to maintain our membership in Mars and our membership in MASC.
So, you're talking about, delete the school committee travel line of 5,000?
So, we'll keep our membership for 6,300 for MASC.
Cut whatever you want, at this point.
So, but I think you just want to say-
So, that's, that's under other expense.
You keep the MASC, because if it goes up to $6,700, you still want to be in it.
Yeah. You know, but, you know, so we can reduce, uh, you know, that $9,000 line down to, say, 7,000.
Sure.
You know?
And then the other 5,000-
We just come out with a policy for no travel, you know, no reimbursed travel expenses, if we want to go, we go at our own expense.
That's a policy. So, there's 5,000.
We don't stay over, there's five grand.
But what I understand is, it wasn't $5,000 in travel last year spent, right?
It was, well, it was-
Chris, well, we're, we're talking, you have something new?
I, I want to make a comment about that, um, because I think what you're doing is, you know, people run for school committee, it's an elected position, but it's not a funded position, it's not a selectman's position, there's no stipend there, and you may have somebody who either runs on the committee, or who gets on the committee, who can't afford to do that on their own, there's requirements for additional education, the last thing I'd want to do is have somebody down on Cape Cod at 11, 12 o'clock at night, have them crash on the way home, I think you're setting a really bad precedent by, by outright cutting this off. I, I get it, things are tight, but we're talking about $5,000 on a 50-something million-dollar budget.
Yeah, but-
I, I just think you're setting a really bad precedent for, for, hey, I got the money, I can take it out of my pocket, I'm going to go to that, someone else has to make a different decision. I think that's a really bad idea, you're, you're getting into what we're doing with teachers and professional development, by not giving them the tools that they need to continue their education, and you're going to do the same thing for yourselves? Quite frankly, the statutory method is something that should have been discovered at one of these conferences, it should have been discovered in the education that you as school committee members get, and so, to cut it completely out, I think that's a really bad idea, that's just my opinion here, based on, on the number of dollars.
And just back to the point, we were talking about having a meeting between the Hanson selectmen, or, or town administrator, however you want to do it, and the Whitman, so we can find out what their discussions thus far have come forward with, as far as what they conceptually have for an agreement, so then you guys can report back, or however we want to do it, so that, then we can better set the budget.
Sorry, I thought Dan had withdrawn his-
No, no, I guess, not yet.
That's why we shouldn't have been talking-
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you-
He tried to withdraw, but-
Okay, so I have a motion and a second.
I'm going to withdraw the motion.
And I'll second it.
So, we don't have to discuss it.
Yep.
Okay.
He withdrew, and I seconded the withdrawal.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah. Just so we can stay on topic.
If I could just add a little more information about what we've talked about. Um, yes, it includes the membership and mass association of school committees, and yes, it includes the, the conference, that is a multi-day conference on the Cape, um, but within some of these line items, there's some items that frankly, if we cut it out of your budget, I'm going to move it somewhere else. For instance, there are, there are amounts in here, they're not huge amounts, but it's for legal advertisements. The school committee is obliged to advertise for, um, uh, the annual budget hearing, and it is here traditionally been charged to a school committee account, since it's the school committee's responsibility. So, while we can certainly go through here and, and if you will, take some monies out, some of it is just going to get moved to a different account that maybe isn't as appropriate as-
It'd have to be a new account.
Either here or there, but we're going to, we're going to need to do those legal advertisements, that, that has to happen.
And, and that's understandable, uh, I'm just trying to figure out any which way possible, you know, and I understand what, uh, you know, Chris is saying, but also, you know, the last class of a conference is at 4:30 in the afternoon, and you're 45, 55 minutes away, an hour, you should be able to drive back and forth if you want to go back the next day. You know, you don't have to stay over.
Hello, Mr. Boyce.
Mr. Boyce, you're still here and awake and doing math.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, that's what I'm saying, you know, is you don't have to stay over. You know, it can be your own choice, if you want to spend the money out of your pocket, that's fine. Uh, to me, I don't think it should be borne on the taxpayer, not when it's that close, in that short a mileage.
That's not local travel.
Maybe because I'm a card guy, it is, you know?
Well, that's not local travel.
To me, name is local travel.
I'm a little bit offended by someone saying, um, you know, maybe we should have learned at, at Mass about, uh, the statutory method and, and known ahead of time. Yeah, maybe we should have done a lot of things, maybe, uh, I don't know, back in 2007, maybe the administration then knew about it and didn't tell us. I'm not, let's stop the conspiracy, let's not do that, please, that's not helpful.
So, can we set up a meeting with the selectmen or not? That's what I'm looking for, that's what Dan's looking for, that's why his motion, I mean, honestly, so we can understand what they've discussed. That's what I'm looking for.
Laura shaking her head, yes.
Sit tonight.
Who's the Whitman's selectman?
Because I have questions.
Yes, can we do this? So, what, what works for you next week? Because I'm getting aggravated, and it's getting late. What, what works next week, so we can sit and have a discussion? Give me a deck. This is why my chief loves me so much. Wednesday, perfect, I'll make a motion, we have a meeting on Wednesday, invite the selectmen, FINCOM, anybody else who would like to come, so we can have a discussion to get this budget hammered out.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Galvin, do you have?
Just a quick point, John Galvin, um, High Street in Whitman, I'm also a member of the, uh, Whitman Finance Committee, um, Article 37 of our town warrant from last year was to install thumb screws into Conley Middle School for $45,000, that was 60% of the total cost. Um, it's my understanding that after a town meeting, the school, the, uh, region received a grant for that money. Um, so what would have happened to that $45,000 that Whitman would have given, and Hanson would have given to the region, um, did that money not come to, is that money that's theirs?
Never came, never came to us from Whitman yet, so we got the grant, we did the work, and we-
Paid the bill. So, then that, so then that money would then be returned back to Whitman's free cash?
It's never taken from Whitman.
It's never taken.
They didn't give it to us yet, so we-
Yeah, so, but the article was approved, so the money is available, so if the money does not get spent, then at the end of the year, that $45,000 will go back to Whitman into their free cash.
Yes.
Yeah, or you just don't send it to us in the first place.
Well, we still, it would still, it's an article, existing article, so if it doesn't get spent, then it would go back to Whitman's free cash.
Yes, yes.
And the same thing would happen to Hanson.
Right.
You should talk to the town accountant.
No, that's fine, I was just wondering if you did get that money, if you had it, what would hap-
We had a discussion-
Mr. Boyce, excuse me.
We had a discussion in our facilities meeting that we needed to check out, did it come forward? Because if not, the discussion was to then return it if it had.
Right, okay.
But it hadn't come, so basically, after talking to Mary Jo in the business department, what usually happens on things like that, is she would bill Whitman for the cost of whatever the warrant was, and then they'd reimburse it, but now, it didn't happen, so we've, you know, it didn't happen, so, yes, you guys still have that money.
Trying to find some money.
Yeah, no, no, right, you're up 45.
You got your answer, John? Thank you. Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
Meet next Wednesday.
It's to meet next Wednesday night.
Meet next Wednesday, invite the selectmen, town administrators, FINCOM members, whoever we need to discuss, so that we can find out what they've got, and I, I understand it's going to go to town meetings, and everybody's got to vote on it, but they've got a concept, let's hear what their concept is, because that's going to make it, at least for me, a little bit easier, as far as numbers go, in trying to figure this out, and I think it, I think it's going to make it easier for a few people.
Does everybody understand Mr. O'Brien's motion?
Yep.
Question.
John?
Meeting here?
Here, here in the library? Here in the library, yes.
Yes.
Yep. Close meeting.
Would we be out of line, uh, to ask administration, you know, for X amount of dollars cut, what the devastation to the district would be? So that they can, we can have that readily available as well?
Like last year's 19 positions.
True.
Sure, give us a number.
Well, yeah, we'll, we'll put together, we'll keep-
Couple of different scenarios.
Actually, you, you know something, just because, I'll throw this out, and I'm, and I'm going to go to the extreme, only because it's been talked about the state taking over, so that's based off of this year's budget, correct?
Come on, man.
Give us what that looks like. If, if July 1st, we don't have a budget, and we go to 1/12th, what does that look like?
Can we do that? Does everybody understand that?
Scenarios? I, I agree with yours, and also, maybe just for the yucks and giggles, you have halfway-
Come halfway.
So, just because I might not be that bright, I just want to, so we're looking at about, then, 2.5922, that would be the total required, so you're asking for, what would that look like at a 2.592 cut out of our budget?
Level funded budget, right.
And then you're looking for about a 1.3.
One, yeah.
Well, with 2.592, we're going to go with a, okay.
Yeah.
Sure.
Does everybody understand that?
And that's for next Wednesday.
Yeah.
Whether or not we're here in school and things aside, right, got it, all right.
John?
We're back.
I have, I have a comment about that. It, if the budget's 1/12th, then it wouldn't be cutting the full increase for the entire year, it wouldn't be cutting the 3.5 million on July 1st, it would be cutting 1/12th of what that increase would be. See what I mean? They're telling you to set a one-month budget, you don't take that entire-year contract, and, and this-
Well, you know something, then let's just do it at the 1.3 million, that's fine.
We'll give you everything.
Yeah, yeah, because I can't work for the union if I have, like, I can't cut you-
Don, wait a minute, Don's got the floor, who's the door? She's still talking, I'm sorry, Don.
Thank you. I think my example was, if the janitor's contract goes up, just say, 36, $3,600, on January 1, you wouldn't need to cut that $3,600, this is my thought process and question, you would cut 1/12th of that, so you would cut, you know, $300 on that July 1st. I don't know, I, I'm just-
That, I think that would be true, but we're talking about cutting employees that you can't cut month to month.
And George, you're right.
Right, they have contracts, so I'd have to know what is going to, what would be taking place for the year, so that they can, we can care for our folks if we have to cut them, and say, please go, try to find another job, and go from there.
Yeah, that's, I, I totally understand what you're saying.
If you're an at-will employee, I agree with you.
Okay, okay, fair enough.
Yeah, I agree with you if you're an at-will employee, yeah.
Okay. Fred?
And I just don't want to mis-
I have a motion and a second, so go ahead and-
I'm not suggesting that for the purpose of doing that, I'm suggesting that for the purpose of showing what the devastation would be.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I just want to clarify that.
They sound good at, yeah. Yeah. I mean, this is what we do.
Okay, so I have a motion, a motion and a second.
So, two scenarios.
Does everybody understand what they're voting on?
To meet next week.
Meeting next Wednesday with these figures.
7:00 P.M.?
Yep.
7:00 here, all those in favor, oh, wait a minute, wait, wait, wait.
Voice, real call.
Yes.
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 Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous. I almost forgot you, Mr. Boyce. I can't do that, okay. Regional Agreement Committee update, I'm going to give you a brief oversight, the Whitman